I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight. And call to order the Committee of the Whole for March 10 here in Machozen. And before we start, I just wanted to acknowledge the territory where we are. This is the Coast Salish Peoples Territory. And in particular, I want to mention the Shiana Nation. The mayor at our last meeting mentioned a really important agreement that was reached between the CRD, the water surfacing agreement between the CRD Regional Water Board or Commission and the Shiana Nation. And what it was about was that the, for many years now, well, since, since water was hooked up to the nation, Shiana have been paying the wholesale rate, sorry, the retail rate, meaning that they've been paying more money than they ought to have paid for their community. Whereas the municipal governments, we pay a wholesale rate and then we pass on the water to residents and they pay retail rate. So the idea is that with this agreement, the nation will be paying the proper rate. And it's, it's kind of a cool thing because for quite a while now, they've been paying too much for their water. Unfair situation. So it's writing a historic wrong. And I think as we live on these lands, we learn about different things that are going on. And this is an important change. And I'm glad that we were part of it here in Machozen, but the CRD in its whole was part of it. Committee, I have in front of you the agenda for this evening. Are there any revisions to the agenda? Changes you'd like to see? There are two, three letters. One letter from Darren Brown about the Parks and Trails Master Plan, a Duke Road East Trail, and two pieces of correspondence related to the school finances and management. So we can talk about those perhaps under those agenda items when they come. With that, would anyone like to move approval of the agenda? Council Shukin motion to approve and Council Donaldson, a second, and all in favor? Thank you. So we're starting off this evening with several presentations. And the first presentation, I'd like to welcome to the microphone Shannon Carmen, who's going to speak about the Machozen Village Square Project. Thanks Carmen. Remember to push the microphone button.
Oh, thank you. All right. Hello. My name is Shannon Carmen and I am a member of the Machozen Village Square Society, or the NVSS, as we are calling ourselves, because you can never have too many acronyms. To start off, I haven't been in front of you all since the July meeting where council approved the Village Square Project. So first let me say a heartfelt thank you to everybody for giving the green light and for your vision and your leadership. I truly believe that this project is going to be a catalyst for a generation of volunteers and create a beautiful welcoming space in our village core that will be strengthening our community for years to come. So, thank you. It's also really good to see that fostering social connection was cited as a priority in the vision statement from the school management report, which I know you'll be talking about later. Thank you to Councilor Donaldson, Councilor Shukin, and district staff for getting that ball rolling. It looks like a really terrific, solid start. So for the phase plan for the Village Square, the plans that were approved in July contained the new proposed entryway as the first phase of the project. Now that it's officially confirmed that a health collective is taking over the lease of the empty classroom where the entryway was going to go through, that aspect of the build has been postponed. However, the other phases, namely the hardscaping and the creation of the Village Square itself, can now move forward. As the plan presented last June stated, the NVSS will work closely with the district to get this project shovel-ready. This includes nailing down the details of the design, getting stakeholder input, sourcing suppliers, refining the budget, organizing project communications, and fundraising. So to this end, and in consultation with the CAO, we'd like to request that a councillor be delegated to work as a liaison with our group so we can begin refining the details of the build, schedule, et cetera. This liaison would work closely with the NVSS, reporting back to council on our progress, and would consult with council on any decisions that might be need to made along the way. As the Village Square Society will be fundraising both cash and in-kind donations to cover the cost of this build, we do want to ensure that we have a clear path of communications established with the district before beginning our community outreach in earnest. So other than that, thank you for your time and we look forward to getting started.
Shannon, just before you leave the microphone, maybe I can ask, are there any questions?
Yeah, you bet.
So I might offer that I don't think that we actually approved the project or had a motion approving the project last July, but talked about it and we were looking at the entrance way and that question. The entrance way, I believe, was approved, but then we never followed through with it because of a rental arrangement. So we'll have to talk about that. And then your point about a liaison council, we could talk about that perhaps when we get a little further down our agenda, maybe under the Public Works Report, Council, if that would be okay. But any questions to ask this evening?
If I could just share, like when I was consulting with district staff to get the full kind of picture of what had happened over the past year, in the July 30th or 31st minutes, there was a motion that approved the entryway, all phases of the entryway project. There was only one phase that was the entryway and the other phases were Village Square. So if that was misunderstood, then we should clear that up.
Council Shukin?
Yeah, thank you, Council Gray. That was my understanding as well, but I absolutely stand to be corrected. I thought that we were moving ahead. It's, it is a little vague, admittedly, so.
Sure. It was just that there was only one, one phase of the entryway. So I don't know what the other plural phases were referring to, other than in our plan, we had put, the proposal was entryway first, hardscaping, and then the actual bits, right? The actual installation.
Thank you. And I think actually the motion passed through the entrance way and then the CAO was going to work on a report for us about the, you know, what would happen as regards the Village Square Project. There were a number of financial questions, of course, there given, you know, requirement to be in the budget, and we haven't seen it in our budget yet. Council, have a.
Well, as far as I know, this is not going to be a budget item for council because the money is going to be raised through donations and through the society itself. So it's not going to be an expense for council. I think, you know, I think it's important that we make a decision to move, to really verify that we are moving ahead with it because it's a wonderful project and it'd be lovely to see something besides that slab of asphalt there as a welcoming to the school.
I'll also point out, sorry, that the Goldstream Gazette did run an article saying, "It's been approved." So not that local media gets everything right, but.
Perhaps we could take a moment and ask our CAO just to comment. I'm looking back, Mr. Payet, at the document of June 3, 2024, and it looked like there was a lot of volunteer effort and money going into the project, but there was a site prep of $3,000 rain garden and drain, $2,500 furnishings, $3,500 for $9,000 for the district, and then an additional $2.25,000 or $2,250 a year in maintenance. Did you take a look at that or are we, where are we at with those calculations, I wonder?
Yeah, thanks. Through the chair. No, I haven't, I haven't looked at any of the finances to date focused on the main entrance situation. And then if we could get some clear direction from council who the NVSS can liaise with, if the intention is to bring back the designs to council, that would probably be time-consuming. So if we could get a liaison to approve designs, that would be fantastic. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, well, there's any further questions, maybe when we will turn back to this under Council Abbott's reporting.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks very much. So we have a second presentation late from Rebecca Nielsen from the Bilston Watershed Habitat Protection Association. Rebecca, welcome you to the microphone.
Is that good? Is that okay volume? Yeah? Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for having me here. I appreciate it. I'm here on behalf of the Bilston Watershed Habitat Protection Association. My name is Rebecca. I work as a biologist with these folks. And Allison could not be here tonight. She sends her regrets. She's not well, but she hopes to be better before her meeting on Friday. So yeah, I'll just scroll through this presentation. Oh, sorry. Apologies, I won't move. If we can scroll to the next slide, I'm just going to give you a quick rundown on what we are up to. So this is the Bilston Creek Watershed. As you can see, the bottom, approximately two-thirds of it lies within the district of Machozen. And we're also working with the city of Langford and hoping to work with Hallwood, Machozen, and the Wanda Fico electoral areas. Next slide, please. So in the Bilston Watershed, we have resident coastal cutthroat trout, which are blue-listed in the province. They are endangered. They're very reliant on the small tributaries that tend to get filled in in urban environments. And the Bilston population is a very special population because it's restricted by sitting Lady Falls. And so there's likely a genetic subspecies that is separate from all the other species that we know of. We are waiting on some genetic testing to confirm that. But we are very protective of them and what was once a very strong fishery has dwindled significantly. So they are really at risk in our watershed. Next slide, please. The watershed is also home to many other creatures, as we know, that do rely on seasonal habitats. Again, these habitats tend to get overlooked during development and they're incredibly important for the watershed and the animals that live there. Next slide, please. And of course, our terrestrial friends. We've got wolves, owls, all sorts of creatures that rely on the watershed, but also the waterways. And the Machozen Foundation is doing some significant work on their corridor project, which really is going to help these, these animals survive in this watershed. Next slide, please. Here's our priorities for the BWHPA in the next coming years. So water quality and flow monitoring is really key to kind of monitor the situation. We're assessing streams for habitat areas of summer refuge that are becoming more important during droughts, and then restoration opportunities. We really want to get the word out, people don't even realize there's still fish in these creeks, and we've got a lot of newcomers. So we're trying to do a lot of outreach and education. And then restoration of impacted waterways and installation of green, green infrastructures such as rain gardens. So I'm stoked to hear that there was a rain garden plan for the school project. That's really great. Next slide, please. Excuse me. So in the last year, we have secured a lot of funding and support throughout the watershed. We've got HTF, we've got Link for Community Grants, Freshwater Fisheries of BC, and Environment and Climate Change Canada over three years. All of this funding has to be matched with in-kind support and funds from municipalities, CRD parks, and volunteers. So that's why I'm here today. Next slide, please. Oh, we're just going to quickly talk about some of the work. So these fish here were caught this last year by provincial biologist Ron Tomy, who we're working with. And next slide, please. We're also hosting propagation workshops to produce plant material, but also educate community members on propagation of native plant species. These successfully propagated plants are used for our restoration projects to reduce costs. Next slide, please. We're also getting this 3D model of the Bilston Watershed created. It's an interactive model that we're going to take to schools, we're going to take to community events, and people can actually watch water travel through the watershed. They can find where they live in the watershed. It's going to be a really cool learning tool. So this is where some of the money is going that we've secured. Next slide, please. And then we're hosting these Earth Day activities. We're actually going to be hosting these every month, so we're going to talk about that in a second. Last year, we hosted a big Earth Day event at Firehawk Creek. We had a whole bunch of volunteers come and we removed a whole bunch of garbage from the creek. A lot of it seems to be blowing in from blue boxes. Next slide, please. So monthly stream cleanups. This is where I'm hoping how we can partner with Machozen and get support. So our plan is to host 12 monthly stream cleanups throughout the Bilston Watershed. We've already had CRD parks at grade four a year along the Galloping Goose, and we've had the city of Langford at grade four within the city of Langford. And so what we're asking our partners, our collaborators, is to support us with garbage bags for the cleanup events and removal of the garbage after the event. So we're going to round up volunteers, we're going to organize the work parties, we're going to clean up a whole bunch of garbage, and we're just asking for support from the district to come and pick up a pile of garbage at the end of the day and potentially supply some of the garbage bags or gloves that we need for each work party. And so we are hoping to do four annual events within Machozen, probably one every quarter. Excuse me, don't mind my throat. So next slide, please. This is what a lot of the creeks are refining that they look like. And so this is why these events are so important. Garbage is blowing in from recycling bins, people are dumping in the neighborhood, as you all probably know. And so we just want to get out of the creeks and out of the riparian areas where it ends up in the creeks. Next slide, please. Another, another activity that we're doing, and I have some examples here, are these road crossing signs. So I've got a couple of examples you guys can see we've been posting throughout the watershed in Langford. So where the creeks cross the roads, we're just letting people know there's fish in that creek. And we're hoping to bring education to the creeks and to the fish there. And so this is something that we're hoping to partner with Machozen as well. We have about two grands set aside for, to cover the cost of some of the signage. We're hoping for help potentially with the telespar kits that the signs are attached to. And we have 15 potential stream crossings that we'd like to tackle. So these are the. Yeah, next slide, please. And then we have our water quality monitoring program. And I see the wrong presentation was posted. This is my not-edited one, but that's okay. So we've started a water quality program through the watershed. Currently, we're monitoring 22 sites. We have secured funding for that. We are currently sampling for benthic invertebrates. At one site in Langford that we have covered, we would like to sample a site in Machozen that we don't have covered yet. We're also hoping to analyze sediment and water at several key locations throughout the watershed, specifically for road runoff and urban contaminants, especially before a lot of this construction is happening. We want to get a baseline. And then we'd like to monitor this annually to kind of just see how changes are happening over time and how they might be impacting the watershed and/or the creatures that are living within the water. Excuse me. So we did send a proposal to council, to the district, a couple of months ago for the water quality monitoring program. So there are more details in that proposal. And next slide, please. Here's a little bit more detail of what we're trying to do and the costs that we have covered. So we have secured a lot of the money required. Basically, 89% of the funding for the whole watershed we have covered, and so we're trying to come up with more of that remaining 11%. In Machozen, we've only got 70% covered because Machozen is not part of the CRD Stormwater Program. They're covering some of the sites in Langford, but not within Machozen. So we're looking for about $2,100 to cover the sites within Machozen. So next slide, please. In summary, we want to collaborate with the district on installation of stream signs at key road and trail crossings. We're hoping for municipal support for volunteer stream cleanup events, and we're looking for funds to support our water quality monitoring program. And next slide, please. And these are all our partners and funders, so thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Rebecca.
Yeah.
I think.
Sorry, I should have brought water in.
No, that's okay. I think probably the best thing for us this year, I didn't understand fully what the presentation would be about, but requesting financial support, probably we would do well to have something in writing, like a request in that form. We do have a grant and aid program that occurs once a year, but I think earlier this year, we did consider something from the Bilston Watershed Habitat Protection Association and affirmed a certain amount of money in our budget. But that won't actually take effect until, or if and when the budget's passed. So there's some, some things there, but if we received a written report, we could look at that and respond to that as well. But questions are on the table.
I believe that written report was in regards to the water quality monitoring program, so that would be, have to be one of three of our asks.
Correct. But it looked like you're seeking more dollars for the water quality here, so.
I think that would be the same amount that we asked for in that document, I believe.
We can catch up after the meeting. Just confirm the details so the council's got and staff have got the numbers nailed down and we can take a look and figure out how we might approach that. Council Donaldson?
Thank you, Rebecca, for your presentation. I've been watching this play out for some time, but have lived on the creek my whole life, so I understand where the transitions that have taken place over, well over 50 years. So I appreciate what you and your group are doing. And it was just in the last six months, I believe, that a group of you were at Hall Bridge cleaning out all the trash under there, several large bags. So thank you for that as well. As my colleague has suggested here, we do have a grant and aid. The deadline is the 15th of this month, so it's coming up pretty quick. And we have $5,000 in that. It's not a very big grant and aid parcel, but it, every little bit helps. And yeah, I would like to hear what my other colleagues have to say as well. But, you know, like garbage bags and gloves and stuff, yeah, those are not too expensive to rally up. I'm sure that even some residents would, would put forth, and I know quite a few of our residents have helped out with your different projects of replanting and et cetera. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Council Shukin?
Thank you, Council Gray. A few questions to you, Ms. Nielsen. Question one, what is the biggest fish that you have found in the Bilston system?
Yeah, we found one last summer that was about this size. And so you saw the picture of the biggest one we found there. I've been told they were bigger than that in the 90s and before that. So that's, yeah, he was about, I have to look at the centimeters, but I think it was just barely fit in our viewer.
Great. So we've talked at fairly great length in this chamber about the stormwater pond that is to be developed for the Center Mountain housing development. And so as we understand it now, that pond has moved from being located on Machozen's property to it'll be apparently situated on Langford's property. And just for people's information, all of the stakes that were there identifying where the pond was have now been removed. So I hope that's a good sign. The testing you're doing, and I trust it's going to go for a number of years, will that be useful in potentially understanding the impact of stormwater?
Yeah, so that was the point of doing the benthic analysis. So without getting into too much detail, that's going to take too much time. We can do water quality. I could go out and sample, I can test it, but if we miss a spill, we're not going to catch the impacts of that spill. If we test sediment, we might catch things that have settled out from previous spills and that might give us a better picture of what has been done historically. The benthic analysis is actually a study of the organisms living in a riffle and it's all the bugs and creatures that live in that riffle. And they are so sensitive to impacts from pollution that we can actually understand what's being thrown at them based on their population. And so that is a really, it's a strong analysis of the health of the watershed. And so getting a baseline for that now before too much has been done to alter things gives us a really good picture of where we're at right now, gives us a picture over time of where we might be headed. And so we were able to do one at, I want to say, it was just below Center Mountain, just off of Happy Valley. We did one last year with CRD parks right at the Langford-Machozen border. So we've got support there. We'd like to do one further downstream as well to capture everything coming off of Center Mountain. And so that's the ask for the benthic analysis. So yes, to answer your question, we're trying to get the whole picture with several different types of testing.
Great. Thank you. So question to the table, but through you, Council Gray. The offer or the ask of support for, just as Council Donaldson is saying, for gloves and garbage bags, I think it'd be great to support that. I'm just wondering if Mr. Payet would see any obstacles to doing that? He's not shaking his head. Okay. And I, I wonder if we could put a motion forward to deal with that right now or do you want to?
We could do that or we just had a presentation now. I've offered that we can get a sort of a layout of all of the, what the asks are and then, and then deal with it that way. It sounds like it's a plan in the future, so there's time to get our act together and just deal with all of them at once. How would that be? Sounds good. Thanks.
Sure. So I'll put together in the next year, so I will get that to you folks. I think I've sent separate ones, and so I'll just have Malcolm make those into one ask.
Thank you. Mayor Little?
Yeah, thank you through the chair. Welcome back to Machozen, Rebecca.
Thank you very much.
Nice to have you back and then congratulations to the Bilston Creek Watershed Protection. You've certainly galvanized a lot of volunteers. I was just wondering how many volunteers? That's the first question that we give, give everybody a sense of how committed the organization is, and you seem to have recruited people from all age groups as well. So give us a snapshot of your volunteers.
I'm going to pull this out of the air and I'm sorry if it's not correct. I think for volunteer list, we've got around 50 some odd. And the last event I was at, I think we had almost 15 folks attend. So in the last few, we've had 10 to 15 people come. So that's, you know, a pretty good community group showing up for work parties so far. I am hoping to increase that number and I am hoping to increase our education program as well to get more young folks out. We've got a few irons in the fire, if you will, in that regard, so stay tuned.
And my second question through the chair is, have you given this presentation to the city of Langford?
Not specifically to them, but I have sent that, we have sent them presentations and we did apply for their grant and aid and we did just receive $2,500 from them for our water quality monitoring program. Last year, they gave us $1,000. So, so yes, we have gotten support from them and we're excited to promote them.
Yeah, I think as an educational piece, I think this would be well-received at the city if you were to do a presentation there. And then lastly, I just wanted to note that we used to have the water quality monitoring as a budget item, line item, and I don't know when that stopped, but we used to, Kim could verify that. Years gone by, and I would certainly support, rather than the grant and aid, which would be half of our grant and aid, I would certainly support the $2,150 ask for the water quality, given the galvanization of this group and the many volunteers and, and the importance of Bilston Creek and its watershed to Machozen. Thank you. Perhaps we can talk about this later in Council Shukin during your, your council's update.
Thank you, Council Gray. Just want to echo what Mayor Little was saying and congratulations for getting the Bilston Watershed Habitat Association back in its feet. So to Ms. Duque, yourself, Ms. Hill, I love the logo and great website and it's really great to see projects and volunteers turn out, so great.
Thank you. I cannot take credit for any of that. It was really a group effort, so thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Oh, Council, I have a question. Excuse me. Rebecca?
It's okay. I just, I want to, don't we have, I can't remember the exact term, but do we have a reserve related to climate that this might fall under?
We do, and we also, I think the money that we all already authorized in the budget process, although not finished, was from a reserve. So I think all of this suggests that we could come back, perhaps I can follow up with the Bilston Watershed Habitat Protection Association and get the report ready for our next finance meeting, well in advance, so that our CFO can look at it and our finance liaison can look at it. There's a number of options, as Mayor suggested, Mayor Little suggested, one would be. of options, as Mayor suggested, Mayor Little suggested. One would be to develop a line item or go back to a line item. The other would be to look at reserves, and the other would be that we're not funding things, but just to go through that proper process would be a good idea, I think. So that's my message to Rebecca in terms of timelines. But just looking at our list of meetings, I'm not sure when the next finance meeting is. I'll just ask over to the CIO. Mr. Payet, do you know when our next finance meeting is?
26th or 27th.
Okay, that gives us a rough idea. Thanks so much. Thanks again for the presentation and lots of interest there, and congratulations on all the work that the Watershed Protection Association is doing. So it turned now to next item on our agenda, which is public participation. And I welcome anyone who'd like to speak to come up and say hello. There's four minutes at the microphone if you'd provide us with your name and the street you live on. Thank you.
Good evening. Do I need to press this to speak, or am I on? I'm on. Okay, great. Good evening. Carol Voight, Gemini Drive. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Machosen Pickleball Club to provide an update on our progress as a renter of the gym and to respond to a few items in the report on school finances. MPC has now had access to the gym for 11 months of the 13 calendar months that have elapsed since February of 2024. We currently have over 220 club members, organized 14-plus pickleball bookings per week, so that's more than 28 hours of programs every week. We've taught beginner lessons to over 50 new players, and as the main renter of the gym, have provided the district with significant revenue, currently about $3,000 per month. Assuming a sustained level of community interest in pickleball, I would project that in the next few years, MPC entirely on its own, will meet and/or exceed the rental budget projections contained within the report. Notable in the report on school finance is that Westshore Parks and Rec have been cited as offering new and popular programs at the old school to the amount of about three hours per week. While MPC is not credited, even though it's the predominant renter of the gym, providing approximately 10 times the number of program hours per week, some of which includes free lessons for participants. It's also notable that Westshore currently pay no rent since they have been granted a free trial period, while MPC has never been offered a free trial, and we pay rent according to the district's fee law, fee bylaw adopted in early 2024. We're a community-based, not-for-profit, organized entirely by volunteers. We offer a low-stress welcoming environment for members to recreate, socialize, get some exercise, and have some fun. Through shared pickleball play, several long-term Machosen residents have been introduced to other long-term residents that they've never before met, while newer residents of Machosen are making new friends. One MPC member who works in public service in our community has been surprised by the number of Machosen residents she has met for the very first time through pickleball. Neighbors living on the same street are connecting with each other through pickleball. Many members of MPC socialize at Machosen Cafe, Mile Zero Brewing, and/or the Broken Paddle after pickleball, thereby providing spin-off benefits to our community businesses. In short, MPC is helping to build community. We've come a long way since our first pickleball session at the gym on February 5, 2024. However, there's still progress to be made in relation to a few key issues first identified in my November 2023 letter to the district. We have yet to implement an efficiently operated, reliable booking and billing system for the gym and adjacent classrooms. It's thus disappointing to me that in the March 2025 report on finance, it's still suggesting a provisional management system involving MACA, volunteers, or third-party undertaking these tasks rather than assigning district staff. From my perspective as a taxpayer, as an MPC director, and as a very experienced rentals manager, I believe it's time for our school, which is a taxpayer-funded facility worth over $3 million, that be managed professionally, responsibly, and impartially by assigned district staff. Consulting with Machosen Community Association may be helpful, since they have successfully operated a booking system for the community house for decades. Moving promptly in this direction should address longstanding concerns of inequity in the old school facility access, billing, and operations. For example, at present, some groups pay to use the gym, while others do not. Some renters comply with the district policy of participants having signed waivers, while others do not. Moreover, it will help to ensure that core paying clients continue to deliver meaningful levels of revenue to the district, and it will help attract and retain other clients. In closing, I hear you. In closing, I have previously recommended, when evaluating different booking and management system options, please consult your main clients and consider their feedback. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Carol. And thanks for all the work you do with the Pickleball Association.
Kim Hill, 1070 Brookview Drive. Good evening to y'all, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. First of all, my apologies for the last time I was here. I let my emotions run a little wild. I hope you understand that it's hard to rein in one's thoughts when one's neighborhood is under siege. There's no need to list the litany of growing garage we've been undergoing and suffering for well over a year. Your CIO, Bob, knows all the details. He's got a big fat file on the matter, including a letter that was signed by seven of the property owners that have been affected that was submitted two weeks ago. However, the situation remains completely unresolved. Now, it's a well-known fact that lack and slack bylaw enforcement in Machosen is nothing new, while this laissez-faire attitude worked for a long time. Around 15 years ago, the infraction started to ramp up, and the traditional approach was, it ceased to work, obviously. In reaction to this, several of you promised to deliver better and more efficient bylaw enforcement when you ran for office. Question is, are you going to keep that promise or not? Okay, further to that is this. It occurs to me that Bob may be being hobbled by new initiatives, distractions, schemes that the taxpayer didn't expect to be faced with. Case in point is the transportation issue that you guys have got several, actually, I think probably nine or 10 letters on, is my sincere hope that you heed and employ what you are hearing from Machosen's elders. Collectively, they have hundreds of years of local experience and gathered wisdom. They are the stalwarts, the dedicated guardians of this place. They're carrying on in the footsteps of those who've gone before us. Those people, those are the people that ensured and preserved the place that we cherish today. Please, I urge you to pay attention to this. We've got priorities here. We've got problems already that we have to handle, and we, there's a, as I think you can all understand, things like preserving what we've already got and enhancing, they're more important than bringing on new issues to the table. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kim. I'll just mention that bylaw enforcement matters are an issue for staff. You know, the council state, the staff then sticks with the bylaws, but we can seek a report in Cambridge to become aware of what's going on. But at the moment, most of us wouldn't have a good feel for that. But I take your point, and we can check into it. Thanks so much.
Yeah, okay. Well, I think the point is, from what I understand, it's the policy of the people on the, at the table here, the bylaws can be, it's not, it's not necessary for you to necessarily make sure that they're enforced. It's the attitude of the district that makes things happen or not happen. So that's my point, okay?
Thank you.
All righty.
Anyone else tonight for public participation?
Hi, my name's Donna, and I live on Ferncliff. I'm new to Machosen. I've been here four years, and I wanted to publicly thank Machosen Pickleball for their thoughtfulness in getting people out inactive. In four years, I've met no neighbors. I've lived in the Langford community most of my life, and had a great community around me. And in Machosen, I never felt like that in the four years, having said that we did move in the middle of a pandemic. But Machosen Pickleball has given me community where it didn't exist before, so I really wanted to make sure that it's protected and that everybody is on the same page with moving forward with proper booking systems. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
And I do have one more question. Do we know what's happening with the bookings so that we have a plan for going forward?
I think we'll pick that up later in the meeting. Donna, can I ask your last name?
Begley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Seriat, the name Machosen Road. I just wanted to comment on the Village Square project. I feel like this has been going on like a really long time. Like, I remember the previous administration, they came up and had a plan and asked to have something done, and it was approved in theory, and then they couldn't really do anything. And I just, I don't know, it's hard to watch this continue to go on. I'd really like to see something happen there. We have this space over there that honestly looks terrible. Like, it's all cracked and gross, and there's weed sticking out, and we have a community group that's willing to do it. I mean, I don't think it's something we want to be spending a lot of money on, because we have so many other important things to spend money on. And if we have this group that's hot to do it, let them do it while they're, you know, willing. If we keep dragging it out, I don't think they're going to want to sit in here in every, you know, couple of years and beg. So that's what I.
Thank you.
Good evening, O'Leary, Windfall Road. Looking through the agenda, one of the major items is the school, but it only deals with half the school. The school's been running at a deficit for a long, long time. I'd like you to look at the whole school, not half. And I want to thank pickleball people for making some life in the productive end of the school, but please, consider the whole school. The taxpayers own it. It shouldn't be exempt to a few people on one end of the school. Let's get some life into it, and let's make it happen. Even if it can't make money, let's break even, if that's possible. So consider all of the school, not one half. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll say thanks to everybody who has participated tonight from the public with appreciation. So committee, if we move to our next item on the agenda, it is the adoption of the minutes of the committee of the whole of February 10, 2025.
Move adoption?
Thank you, Counselor Shukin, seconded by Counselor Donaldson. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous? Approved. Thank you. And now we'll just go through the minutes that we've received. The first one is Parks and Trails Advisory Select Committee meeting, February 18, 2025, kind of a motion to receive. Thank you, Counselor Shukin. And seconded by Mayor Little. Any comments or questions?
Counselor Gray will have something to say about that meeting in my update.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I guess I had one, maybe it'll come up in your meeting if we can turn, I'll ask a question when we get to that, about if we've heard back from the engineers' report, if we'll get some ideas for the Duke Roadies Trail on financial costs. Great, thank you. So I'll call the question. All in favor? Approved. No objections. The next minutes to receive are the Environmental Advisory Select Committee meeting of February 25, 2025. Counselor Shukin, receipt. And Counselor Epp, seconded. Comments or questions? All in favor? Approved. The next one's our Healthy Community Advisory Select Committee, February 25, 2024.
Move receipt.
Thank you, Counselor Epp, seconded by Counselor Shukin. Any questions there? Call the question. All in favor? Thank you. That's approved with no objections. And then I think this might be the final one, Agricultural Advisory Select Committee meeting of February 26, 2025.
Move receipt.
Thank you, Counselor Donaldson, and seconded by Counselor Epp. I had a question here myself. Did anybody else have something they wanted to ask? It was just about the clarification on items, the other business, and it would be items C and D. And what I'm struck by is the notion of the, the new group is coming to existence called Machosen Grown Society, and then the Agricultural Advisory Select Committee. And I was wondering, we're going to ask the, our CFO about donations to the presumably Machosen Grown Society, but I'm wondering if those should be separated just to avoid any conflict of interest. So that's really the question. Should those groups, you know, be two separate groups, or is it all one group?
So your question about the Machosen Grown, what is it that the district is donating funds for?
I'm just reading on the notes that it says that there's a donation from the Machosen Foundation to, presumably that's to the Machosen Grown Society?
No, that is actually to, it's in regards to the agricultural plan implementation. Machosen Grown Society is a separate society that would come under my agricultural portfolio. They're not asking for any funds from the district at this time.
No, it was a reference to the Machosen Foundation providing funds to somebody.
Yes, so they've offered $5,000 to farmers.
So it's to the farmers, it's not to the district. I'm just trying to get clear. It looks like there's two groups. We have the advisory select committee that's advisory to the district, and then the Machosen Grown Society, which is a separate organization. And I was just wanting to be clear that they are two separate organizations, so we don't get into a conflict of interest issues.
So there's this one organization, which is Machosen Grown Society, that's the community garden people. They're completely separate from farmers. The Agriculture Select Committee is a governing body from this council, as we all know. The Machosen Foundation has offered a $5,000 donation to one of the action items in the agriculture plan. Outside of this, there is a meeting planned to decipher how that actually is going to work. It's not clear in these minutes, obviously. So, yeah, your question of the $5,000 donation, that is what's been offered from the Machosen Foundation. The Agriculture Select Committee isn't a society, it's not a, doesn't have a bank account, people say. So this is just an offer of a donation to some work in the agriculture plan. How that's going to work, that I am not clear on.
Okay, so it's not coming to the district. It's to some other Okay, so it's not coming to the district, it's to some other groups. Great, I just wanted to be clear what, I wasn't sure when reading it, what it, what it meant. That sounds reasonable. The other question I had was in relation, it looks like we're, we're learning here that the CRD is confirming plans for two goose calls in twenty twenty five. So that's new information to us, I guess, you know, we were going forward to AVIC to, um, advocate that goose calls appear or be done. Um, so that was just a good point to highlight in the, in the minutes. And I just also wanted to say that, um, the request that residents locate goose nests or if they're aware of them to report them in. Perhaps we could put that up on the district website so people knew to do that.
The next survey for that is in June and it's a very short period of time. So yes, it, it is to go onto the website. Um, that survey is only like three days long because it's when the geese are actually molting. So yes, thanks for the reminder.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? So we'll, um, vote on the motion to receive, all in favor? That's approved, thank you, no objections. So the next item on the agenda, I guess, is the, um, referral from the Agriculture Advisory Select Committee on the issue of, um, the goose, uh, goose call. And I'll turn that over to you councillor Donaldson.
Thank you, so this is something that came up, um, and, uh, the January meeting that I missed, that would be the, twentieth, I think, nineteenth or twentieth. And so this is an act, this was an action item and so went to the Agriculture Advisory Select Committee, um, February twenty sixth. And so the motion is that the committee of the whole recommend to council that Mayor Little draft a letter urging the provincial government to support a goose call as related to the AVIC resolution and the backgrounder documents.
Is that a motion?
That's the motion.
Seconded by councillor Shookin, discussion? Councillor Epp?
Yeah, I just want to note, considering that the CRD is doing these two goose calls, like is this really relevant to continue with, with this? If that's happening too?
So the, the, um, the resolution that's going to AVIC is not specific to Victoria. It is for the island and, and it's for the province, right? We're hoping it will go up to, uh, to, uh, UBCM as well because we're having problems with farms, um, in the lower mainland and beyond. So this is why we decided, the calls that we've just heard about are something that's new, it came after we put the resolution together. And the resolution, which I will present next month at AVIC, um, will encompass larger than what's going on on South Island.
I guess I just wondered, um, what, uh, like there's no real specifics. Like I know the goose, geese are a problem, but there's no specifics about numbers, like how many geese are gonna be, um, called? Wh- where exactly? Like I know it's a province wide, but I know in the Chosens, we, excuse me, for example, or in the CRD, we don't really have any specifics about, about numbers or, you know, I, or how many have, does that have to be every year or every month? Or, you know, how this actually comes about?
That's a good question, it's the same as, uh, same as the information, it's just, we've just learned about the calls. Uh, prior to that, CRD wasn't supporting calls. And so clearly, um, they'll have some more information that I hopefully will be able to rely on going into you, uh, AVIC. We've got the information in the background here and, and there's, I'm gathering more information as, as we, as we speak before I go there. Um, to find out what sort of data is, is available for that.
Right, thank you.
Maybe I could ask Mayor Little, do you know, happen to know at the CRD level, what, what's going on? I mean, obviously, things have changed since we first met about this. The CRD, I presume, is holding the permits?
Yeah, I, I do know that the CRD is planning to do some goose calls, I don't know how many and I don't know where. Um, it is likely that, uh, because there's been such an uproar on the peninsula, uh, in the problems with the goose, the geese, um, uh, destroying crops, they've been more vocal than the Machosen group. I, I suspect it's going to be on the peninsula, but I don't know. Uh, but regarding what we're dealing with here, the request to send a letter, I'd be in favor of that. Uh, because, uh, we don't know if the Chosens will be, will be missed in that tonight. I think it's, it's important that we engage the province, um, um, and outline our, uh, difficulties here in the district. And this will support not only our agricultural plan, but support our farmers who have lost, uh, thousands of dollars of crabs, crops due to the, um, invasive geese.
Thank you. And I would hope the, if up on the peninsula, we do have the Peninsula Agriculture Commission group that we, I think, pay some money to. So they're representing us as well when they're advocating there and they sit on the partnership with the CRD on the issue of ghost management. So I would hope someone, some action would happen here. Did you want to say something else councillor Donaldson?
Actually, I attended one of the PAC meetings and I, I was actually, uh, enlightened, um, sadly, uh, just how much devastation, uh, the peninsula farmers are actually experiencing. Uh, we're not talking tens of thousands of dollars, it's, it's surmountable. Uh, they're, they're losing a lot of crops. Uh, one particular farm has lost, um, thousands of dollars just in chicken pullets to AI, aviation influenza, or avian influenza. Um, so there's lots of different things that are, that are, um, devastating the crops. There aren't insurances that they can get covered for this sort of, uh, thing either. They're trying to make a living out of it. They have done so for generations, but it's getting more and more difficult. The, uh, these birds are multiplying faster and faster, they're not leaving, they're staying here. They're not the, uh, Canada goose of the past, there, there's lots of imports, different, different strains of them. Uh, yeah, so, and it's, it's not just here. So, um, I, I feel, um, it's important that we support agriculture on the island, in this province. We don't have to look too far to know that we're in a crisis with a lot of things and food is very critical.
Well, perhaps the letter can just reflect the background that we know, which is, we started off, um, without something happening, uh, the CRD's agreed to and it's, and it sounds like it's gonna manage it probably through that partnership group. And that, um, and the making the point is the mayor's put forward and you've put forward that it's a bigger problem and we'd like to see it continue with provincial, um, um, how shall I say, elbow grease. Anybody want to say anything else before we vote? So the motion is to, for the mayor to draft a letter urging the provincial government to support the goose call in relation to the resolutions we put forward already. So I'll call the question, all in favor? That passes, none opposed, thank. Next item on the agenda is the, uh, Finance Councillor's update, councillor Donaldson.
Thank you. Um, so I was, uh, prompted to, um, to collaborate, uh, reports that I have given in the past on the Machosen Grown Society. And so I thought I would do that in my councillor's update. Um, in looking back on my, uh, previous updates, there's at least five reports that I have, uh, mentioned, um, about the Machosen Grown Society. So I just wanted to bring it all together at once now and say that, um, in, um, that in the fall of twenty twenty four, we did a site excavation and, uh, had French Enterprises, which is a contractor with the district, come out and do some work for us, uh, free. So we're pleased with that. Um, the society will, as they move along, have a, uh, sign of all of their sponsors and the people that do in kind work. So that, that will be their, um, at their, uh, entrance way when they get more established. They have been doing work parties this past fall, um, clearing away some debris that was left after the excavation and, uh, starting with some sheet mulching through rain and, uh, very different, uh, inclement weather. But we were there just to get started. There's still a lot of peat gravel that we will need to deal with, um, which provides great drainage, but not great for, uh, growing. Uh, they do have, um, the district of the Chosens is, as we speak, creating a, or developing a license of occupation. Um, all the supporting documents are, uh, available and being put into that. Um, the group is looking at different funding, uh, resources. Um, they've talked about doing a plant sale, applying for grants, um. Membership drive this past weekend, they were at the CD Saturday at Belmont School that the Reimagine Group put on, um, to get known and, uh, take a list of prospective members. Uh, in an article that I wrote, uh, back in December that went into the Muse, that was for an information session, which was hosted here in the chambers, um, January twenty fifth. That is the second one that has taken place. So they're trying to get their name out there. Um, they did advertise also on the marquee sign out on the road here. Um, so there is some interest, um, still growing and they're very enthusiastic. I'm in, impressed with, uh, their ambition that they have for such a small group, but we'll see what happens with that. And if anybody is interested in learning more, I'd certainly be able to get you in touch with, uh, the group. Um, this is located behind the tennis courts at the old, uh, school field. Uh, it previously was a, uh, swing park and it had over a foot of peat gravel that had to be dug out as well as the brambles and numerous people have, uh, engaged in doing bramble bashes and to no avail, it's been a lot of, of, of work. So I'm really pleased that a machine was able to get in there and take the bulk of it away. Um, moving on to the Great Victoria Public Library Board, which is one of the, one of the four boards that I sit on. Um, currently the staff is, are visiting different municipalities, uh, during their budget talks to explain the services that they have and the expenses, uh, that are incurred by those services. The Nellie McLung, uh, library was closed on Shelver, on not Shelver, um, McKenzie Avenue. Um, it is, uh, going to be rebuilt into, um, affordable housing with the library at the, uh, bottom floor, um, entry level there. Right now, they will be, they haven't just yet, but they assume will be opening up a smaller, um, satellite location. Can only take forty people at a time due to, uh, fire regulations. Uh, so people will just be going in and out and that does include employees, so, uh, not too much lingering. Um, and then, uh, the Great Victoria Public Library is also working with Sandage to, uh, to open as, as soon as they can. So we'll see, uh, they'll have a soft opening, probably not anything major because of the capacity to have people in and out. Um, soon the, uh, well, as of the twelfth, a couple of days from now, we're hoping to see that the interlibrary loan service gets, um, uh, resumes. Uh, we, uh, put that on hold for a while because of staffing, uh, low staffing situation that we have. Uh, West Shore Parks and Recreation, uh, staff always provide us with a presentation at every board meeting. Um, they're very, uh, proud of the facility and the work that they do, they're very enthusiastic and positive. I have to say, this is one of my, um, more positive, they're all positive, but they're a very engaged group and, um, are always willing to, uh, answer all of our questions and, uh, very proud of everything that they do. So I, I appreciate the fact that they're a very diverse group of people as well. Uh, in a previous meeting, uh, Mayor Little had asked about pools, um, and how much they cost. And one of the things I can say with this group is they have managed to take heat from ice originally to heat the, um, childcare center, but now they are heating the pool. So they are getting awards for doing this kind of, uh, engineering and, uh, there's, uh, cost saving of over eighty-five percent just doing that. So they're looking at doing more and more of those sorts of things. Uh, hopefully we'll see some of that on their website in, at future times. Um, presently, they've converted, um, a space that used to be a little cafe, uh, just, uh, adjacent to the pool registration desk when you come in the main entrance and that's gonna be our, um, our HR, um, uh, office, uh, which has just expanded from one person to now three people. Uh, as we have quite a bit of staff there, it's, um, upwards of a hundred people. And, um, yeah, so they're working on that. I reported last time that urban recreation beach volleyball had come down in presentation. Um, and it sounded really exciting, but the staff has encouraged us to put that on hold until the, uh, West Shore Recreation Master Plan has, um, uh, has gotten a bit more of a hold and we'll be having, this council, we'll be having, um, a sit down with them as well, uh, the master plan people, the consultants. And so the volleyball will, um, be embraced at some point in time to see whether or not that's going to be a, a fit. So they decided to hold off until we get results back from the, uh, works of the consultant during the master plan, uh, process. Uh, pickleball court construction update, we didn't get the grant, but we fortunately, the staff had put aside, uh, funds in the budget. Uh, so we're hoping to see, um, the contract signed for that, uh, soon and then, uh, the project will be, um, will be starting. And I'm not sure what the completion date is, I hear a couple of different dates, so I, uh, dare not say to get people's hopes up too much, but it will be this year, of course. Um, yeah, I know very talked a little bit about the, uh, master plan and I've written a couple of articles, uh, in the Muse, uh, to promote, um, the various, uh, activities in my portfolios, agriculture, a couple of different ones with the, uh, farmers market, the Chosens Grown Society, as well as the, uh, exciting recreation that's happening, um, in this school. And hopefully we'll, uh, learn more as we go along. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could I ask, is the Machosen Grown Society doing more than community garden? Part of the egg plan was that the, a group of farmers would be identified who maybe would pick up some of the action items on the farming side. And I wonder if that group is doing it or that may be somebody else in the end.
Uh, this is the discussion we're having right now at the Agriculture Select Committee.
Thank you. Councillor Epp?
Uh, I just wondered if you could remind us when that, uh, the master plan, uh, project is gonna be at Machosen School? It's coming up and I, I can't remember what the date is.
I thought it was this week or next week.
I got it here, it's March twentieth, that's a Thursday at four P M. Um, the, the West Shore Parks and Rec Facilities Master Plan Council workshop. So in this, on here, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, well, thanks very much councillor Donaldson. Councillor Epp, did you want to take over and give us some sense of public works and protective services?
Uh, sure, so I've got some that's been written and I also have a bit of a, of a verbal update as well. A couple of notes from the written part and that is that the, uh, so, the Chosens Senior Association is having their AGM this Thursday, uh, from one to three P M at the Community House. The guest speaker is Caitlin Waring, she's a kinesiologist and fitness program assistant with West Shore Parks and Rec. And she'll be speaking on active aging, embracing movement at any age. Which is always a good thing for those of us getting older. Um, and then the Crest meeting, uh, one notable thing is that Crest has a, has a co, Colwood has approved and Crest has a co-agreement with Talis for a tower at Royal Bay. So that's going to be going ahead. Um, this should improve cell phone coverage for at least a few residents, especially around the, uh, possibly Albert Head area. So I guess it's, it's a little bit of improvement anyway. Uh, I know councillor Shookin probably has some on this too, but councillor Shookin and councillor Gray and I went to the Coastal Douglasburg Conservation Partnership, um, event and, uh, and it was very interesting, a lot of really informed people, that's for sure. Uh, one of the most notable things was, was a, a talk by Juliette Craig from the Coopney Conservation Program. That group there has funded their program, which is spread around the Okanagan through successful referendums where residents, uh, were asked to pay, uh, in one area fifteen dollars, another one twenty dollars for, as a parcel tax or property tax with the money specifically directed to conservation projects. It was really neat, she just had list after list of various conservation projects on both private and public land that had been funded, um, through this, this group, so that, that was really interesting.
Councillor Gray, just, um, to supplement with councillor Epp was saying, what I was really impressed by is the funds that were raised through the levy, uh, were leveraged into getting more, uh, external grants. So, um, almost to the point where it was in some cases nine to one dollars, uh, from outside with the, with the local investment, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was good, they really have collected quite a huge amount of money through that. Uh, so on to public works, um, it's a sad reflection on some of the motorists who travel Machosen roads. The public works crew recently had a blitz on garbage and filled a hundred and ten large garbage bags just from the Machosen roadside, including three of them that were packed full of rotten meat out of an old freezer. So you know, it is illegal, so if people see people chucking things out their windows or off the, out of their backs or their pickups into the ditches, you know, try to get a licensed number. Uh, but speaking of garbage, there's bound to be more of it. The Fourth Annual March for Liz takes place on Sunday, March thirtieth, from nine to one, uh starting at the Fire Hall. There'll be bags, gloves, and safety vests vests there for for people. And the Fire Smart Crew is setting up a barbecue and will have information on fire smarting your property. Uh, the late Liz Jackowski, for those of us remember, with her dog Dinto, was a familiar sight along Mochosen roadside. She walked miles and miles daily picking up trash to help the commu- keep the community pristine and green. Uh, and Mochosen Search and Rescue this year has recognized Laura Saint, not the Saint Jean or Saint John, but anyway, she's been recognized with the Extra Mile Award. The team said Laura has made significant contributions, has brought new and innovative ideas to life. All professionalism, positivity, and a tremendous amount of skill and knowledge. Uh, and one note, I think it was Counselor Gray mentioning this as far as an evacuation plan given uh an oil spill. And I was speaking to the fire chief about this, and in twenty twenty, uh there was an all-hazard evacuation plan uh formed, so that pretty much covers everything along our our shorelines as well. And the information on that is in a binder in the Emergency Operations Center. And uh following up on Ms. Carmen's talk about the Village Square Society and the plan for the courtyard. I think we, you know, we really need to give them our support in this, but uh with that in mind, I would like to make a resolution. I mean, there seems to be, there was a motion before, but maybe there wasn't, so anyway, I would really like to make a formal resolution that we give the go-ahead to the the Village Square Society to get started on the, on the plan for the courtyard. So a lot of some motion.
I'll second for discussion, thank you. Would you like to say a little bit more, Counselor Epp?
Uh, well, I think, you know, we we've heard it, but it's just, as someone mentioned, this has gone on for years and years. And uh I feel that it's kind of important to to get going and to give them some support now, or this may just be going for another few years. I mean, maybe we could just leave it for the next council to deal with, I don't know, but it would be really nice to to get something done there because it's uh, it's in need.
Counselor Shukin.
So um, thank you, Counselor Gray, and to Counselor Epp. Um, I I I have to confess a bit of confusion. Um, I am now thinking about what we approved last July, and I feel like there is a little bit more clarity that's needed. And now that we don't have the entryway, I'm, that raises a few other questions. Um, I I'm very supportive of the project. But I I I think it would be great to have another, and I apologize for this because we probably have been told numerous times, but I feel like there would be, it would be good to have another information session. Not so much about what it is we're doing, but about the timelines and about a work plan as well, and plans on fundraising. Um, and I just wonder if that might come at the next committee of the whole meeting. I I I personally, I'm, again, I'm supportive of the plan, I feel like we're we're missing kind of the the grapple points to understand what it is we're moving ahead with. And um, so, and with that, um, I I wonder if I could propose an amendment that where we support this, but, sorry.
Maybe just let's have a bit of discussion where you formulate your thinking. Anyone else? Well, I'll just clarify, so I went back to, I thought we approved it as well a long time ago. And I got a communication from Ms. Carmen, and I looked it up, and it's like, oh my gosh, no, we approved the entryway, the grand entryway, which is not happening. Um, and then we, there was going to be a staff report to sort out the details of the um Village Square project. And that was in July of twenty twenty four, or uh, yeah, July twenty twenty four. And so I think the issue, if if I remember, and I don't have solid notes on it, but was the question of the finances. So just simply, as I mentioned earlier, nine thousand dollars from the district for the Verison Sundry. Um, kind of get it up, and then two point, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for annual maintenance. And I think it would be good for us to get that straight. Is that still, this was in the proposal from the proponents, from the Village Square Society. And I believe our staff are going to look at it and say, oh, we need to do that, or we don't, or it looks like it's all taken care of because there's quite a bit of fundraising being done by group itself. And did we really need to put in district funds to the, to the project? If that helps, I hope it does, Counselor Epp.
I just wondered if we might ask Ms. Carmen for um a few more comments on, now that she's heard, heard some of the queries.
Yes, please.
Press.
You just press the button there, it'll make
Did I, it was already on. Buttons are so fun to press. Um, yeah, uh, if there's more um clarity that is, you know, desired, um, I think it would still be really useful to appoint a council liaison. So because when we're doing this on our own, um as like a society or the group that's formed, um, we can speak with the C A O and get a bit of information, but the best conduit for information would be to have a liaison person that we're working with. Um, that budget, some of those line items, because of the um entryway no longer being a part of it, absolutely would be amended, right? And so um that, we envisioned that would be a part of the the liaison relationship that we would be going through, the things that I pointed out. And it's refining the budget, refining the design, consulting with the stakeholders, and then coming back to council with that super tight plan. Um, so that, in in terms of uh moving forward, it uh, I would suggest that we still, if council would be willing to appoint a liaison, to work with us to put together that final package, if you will, um as a, as a way to keep going, right? Because for us to to go away and to come back again to give you information that we've sort of already provided, I mean, it just seems like, you know, we're we're rehashing old things.
Thank you very much. So the suggestion is, excuse me, Counselor Epp?
I said I'd be happy to uh to be that liaison if that's the route we are going to go.
That sounds good. How about, then, we have a motion on the, on the table. Um, we can retract the motion perhaps and follow the advice given. Just that you were going to liaison role, okay? That all right? That suit with you? Great, thank you. So what we'll do is um um accept the nomination or the the appointment of a council liaison to the group, and then they'll come back with a package to to explain. I think really what's important here, I've heard mo- uh a variety of comments and support. We have a financial question we need to answer, and it sounds like there's some design issues that need to get worked out. The committee of the whole is not very far away. It's not an issue of delaying this, it's rather to sort of pull it together and get it in a nice package so that we can consider it. The other thing is to think about the budget, um so in line with the budget uh cycle. So sooner is better than later.
You bet.
And I think Counselor Epp could walk you through that, they have too much trouble, along with Mr. Pyatt and others on staff. Does that meet the satisfaction of the committee? Mayor Little?
Yeah, I I'd much rather see um Counselor Epp's uh resolution be put forward because um in a year's times, it's going to be muddy. Um, it would be preferable to have a clear motion that council supports in principle uh the Village Square project. Um, and um uh with the second part of that motion be um, the council liaison will be Counselor Epp. It's, I think it's just cleaner that way, and this is stalled. It would give also the uh volunteers a little bit of a boost that uh we are actually indeed supporting it. And of course, the plan will come back and the finances will come back, and it sounds like it's going to be less than nine thousand dollars, so with that, I'd be interested in uh Counselor Epp putting forward her motion again with the council liaison court.
Sure, the motion's been retracted at this point, I think we'll say, and Counselor Epp's prepared to be the liaison and come back with a report. Uh, we could go through that exercise if you like, but I, approval in principle, I think we may have gone into this before. Sometimes that causes trouble. We'd actually be looking at something to make a decision at our next meeting, which is not very far away. I think uh with Counselor Epp's interest in taking on the role, with the interest of the uh Village Square Society, I don't see the need to go back and approve anything in principle at this point. But I'm in your hands, folks, if the motion comes forward, we'll take a look at it. Counselor Shukin.
I I would be in favor of withdrawing the motion if we can, just, I think we'll have the chance next month to actually move decisively on this. And I I think that's a wise approach uh that Ms. Carmen is talking about, about pointing the liaison and kind of moving in step that way, coming, coming back with uh with a package so we can gain clarity. That's my sense of it.
Thank you, any other discussion on the item? So the decision would be that Counselor Epp be a liaison with the group, the Village Square
Chosen Village Square Society?
And and work with the staff and come back with a note explaining uh the proposal light, and then the finance side of it. And any other questions that arise?
Point of order, um, the decision has been made, there's been no resolution put forward for uh Counselor Epp to be the counselor, so we should vote on that at least.
Sorry, I asked if there were any objections, and there were none, so I took that as a decision. Um, but if you like to move the motion, I'm happy to to handle that.
I can, I can make it, just so you're not appointing yourself. Okay, so I would move that um Counselor Epp be named the liaison to the Village Square Society. Um, and with the goal of bringing back more information to council at the next committee of the whole meeting, so.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Passed, approved, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, the last item I have is um is regarding the uh the Healthy Community Advisory Select Committee. Uh, this was a while back, committee of the C A O, Counselor Donaldson and myself. I was formed to look into ideas, possibly an ideas fair for the school. Uh, the committee has never met, and the C A O has has had a little time to spare, so um as a committee with connections in the community, uh the Healthy Communities Committee was banding around thoughts about the school. And one was to create uh an all-encompassing event, which would include the renters of the school in an open house format uh with MACA, as well as many community groups who were interested, and hopefully, members of council. Uh, the gym has space for several information tables, et cetera, and the stage could be set up for music and entertainment. Um, for council uh contributions, just examples might be um Counselor Donaldson to take the lead on things such as an ideas fair component, agriculture, a community garden. Um, Counselor Shukin might do a volunteer fair section as something on the Parks and Trails Master Plan. And Counselor Gray, something on the environment and biodiversity and asset management plan. Um, just, just thoughts, right? Um, and those are just my thoughts, but these are all possibilities. I'd like to know if council has an interest in having the Healthy Communities Committee start looking into an event like this.
Thoughts?
Any thoughts, thoughts?
I, well, I think it would be interesting to to do um from, from the perspective, I, and I think I can probably speak for Pete Task on this. Um, we're moving ahead with like a Parks and Trails specific event, so it wouldn't be a big driver, I think, to do that, so. And um I'm just looking ahead at at the work that's going to be needed to get, get the master plan done, for example. Um, yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm have to confess to being lukewarm to it, so.
Mayor Little?
I think it's a great idea. Um, I think healthy communities could sink their teeth into this, and um it would be a great outreach for our citizens, bring everybody into the community, generate some ideas, uh and uh perhaps some volunteers. So I think it would be great if the healthy communities take this on, and and I'd be willing to participate.
Thank you, yeah, as I had mentioned at the previous meeting, uh this is something that we did discuss at the strategic planning meeting, all of us that were there, including three staff. And uh we had identified at that time that it would take a lot of effort to do, and that we would, we were trying to consider ways of doing it, not full-blown like our counterparts in our two neighboring communities um on our borders, uh that we would have gone on the wings of the Act of Transportation Consultants, however, that uh decision was made uh separately, and it didn't come to the fruition that we had planned in our priorities. So um I I don't know, we've got A V I T coming up, a lot of other stuff, I'm not sure when this would be, if it would be in the fall or the spring. I'll stir up, any ideas?
No, it's just, it was just a, you know, it was just a thought. So it's nothing, there's nothing, I thought we need input from everybody, like everybody here, and and just kind of all, I don't know, to come together, like it was just a a thought that maybe the whole community could kind of participate in something that would uh really show off the school and and what's going on, and and how how much or how little people would be willing to be involved or contribute, I guess that would be up to them, up to us here, and about, up to the community groups and and the people that are are using the school.
The one other thing that we did talk about as well was having an open house at the school.
Yeah.
And I had thought that if we had done the A T P stuff over there, we could have done like little tours, whatever. A lot of people have not seen the school, and I think it's overdue. I think we need to get, open up those doors to our community, not just the recreation, not just uh training, but let the people see and showcase one of our assets. And so um maybe we can go back to our respective um groups, um advisory groups, and I know that the agriculture um people probably would like to do something. I mean, the Chosen Grown Society might say, hey, come on over and have a look at what we have got so far, it's just a blank canvas, but I don't know, so uh lots of things we could do, it's just a matter of when.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, and I guess it would just be, it would be a big project, probably takes some time to get together, but you know, there's, there's nothing happening for, so far, we've talked about it, and but haven't really gotten off of the ground, so I thought that would be, that'd be great, and I think the, you know, the open house thing would really be, it's really important for the community to be able to go around there and see what's there and what the possibilities are and so on. Something like, you know, I mean, at Mochosen Day, all the community groups that put up tents and have information booths, like something on a similar sort of scale for anyone that wanted, would be wanting to participate. There's lots of room in the gym and in the, the other classrooms that, that are empty, we could have have things in there and people could wander around. I don't know, it's just, you know, it's just totally in a completely formation stage, but if everyone could kind of contribute ideas and then and then we can, we can take them to the committee and and have a look and see what we might be able to come up with.
Yeah, well, we did, we did have a subcommittee, it's three of us, but anyways, that's history now. And I did already start some work on that, so that'd be great, whatever, whatever anybody wants here, so.
I'll just offer that, that I think an open house at the school would be quite a lovely event. I'm less interested in the sort of a scattershot, I don't mean that negatively, but of a whole lot of topics. We've got a lot going on already, um and I feel like, and we have some events that are occurring to take a look at those um ideas. And so if we did focus on the school and maybe focus on or or opportunity for people to learn about volunteer opportunities in the community or something like that, I think that would be a fun evening, um or a fun afternoon. I'd be less excited about every single topic that we're all working on, you know, being showcased, just the amount of work involved and um and what product there might be from it. But but I'd like the idea of you guys kicking it around and seeing what what may come. So I think it's a worthwhile discussion for you guys to have, and whether, whether uh I win in that argument about focus or or wilder, that's up, you know, the committee can think about that, that's just one, one little piece of input you've heard from others as well.
Right, so I, but I, we, we need a motion that uh, you know, council um approve the Healthy Communities Advisory Committee to just uh look into the possibility of a, of a community-wide event at the school.
Sure, take that as the motion, and that as the second. And any further discussion? All in favor? Approved, thank you. Does that conclude your report, Counselor Epp?
That does conclude.
Thanks so much, that was lots of material there, thanks for all your work. So I guess I'm So I guess I'm next up with the Environment Committee and, and some things that are going on. I'll just mention, we did have a seminar on the subdivision process on February twenty sixth and very nice to hear from Ron Mathiussi, who's a consultant and a planner. And that was a very formless session. I think it was well received by council, staff and residents in attendance. Unfortunately, due to a technical glitch, it was not recorded. Mr. Pyatt has offered that we might repeat the seminar at another time. But we'll try and figure out, you know, some ways of cementing the information that we got. And we'll see where it goes. In the meantime, I want to say thanks to Mr. Pyatt for organizing it and thanks, Counselor Shukin, for convening the meeting. This year I participated in the twenty twenty five Coldest Night of the Year with counselors from Collwood and Langford, the Walk in Langford. I wonder if anybody else joined in, in Suk or in town? Not this year. We had coordinated previous years, but not so much this year. It was a good event. I think the, the money raised was going to go to the Therapeutic Recovery Center, the C N V Royal and some other activities from our place. And so that's kind of was a good purpose and happy to be, happy to have been involved. The mayor mentioned the CRD, Regional Water Strategic Plan Public Consultation at the, our last meeting and just to take the opportunity again to mention tonight, that there's a survey that closes on March thirty first. You can access it through a link on the district website or the CRD website. Clean drinking water, of course, is a terrific asset and your views are important. There was some clearing of unexploited ordinance at Mary Hill recently by the Department of National Defense and folks had noticed some flagging tape and things like that. I'm not sure if it's done. But they are out there working the land a little bit to, to get rid of anything they can find. And the message to public was if you saw anything that you were concerned about, not to touch it, but report it into nine eleven. Tomorrow, there's, we have the mayor's tea and I'm going to join Mary Little at that at two P M. here. And encourage people to drop in and chat, let us know about your concerns and we'll try and answer any questions that we can. As part of the agenda package, I put in an outline from MEAS about a biodiversity and natural areas, or national assets plan from Michoson. It's meant to align with our O C P and reflect a wide range of activities already underway in the district, supporting stewardship of our natural environment and ecosystems. This all started actually when MEAS got the referral for the Beckingham subdivision. And when we got looking at it, we provided a report back to the approving officer. And we, looking at the official community plan at section two point three, where sensitive ecosystems are identified, Beckingham wasn't there and it's an important wetland, that piece of property. So we also, looking at section two point three, what the plan says, the official community plan says is, hey, during what the plan is in existence, we should be adding the names and locations of all the sensitive ecosystems we can identify in the, in the district. So that they would be part of the plan and become known in terms of limiting impact of development on those properties. So when we started looking at it, we were realizing, gee, we need to get at it and identify those areas and map some of them. From that, we began thinking about looking beyond just those sensitive ecosystems, but biodiversity in the district. Of course, biodiversity is a building block for our lives and for planetary survival. And Michoson is very rich in biodiversity with the carnivores we know about. You know, so close to town, bears, wolves and cougars and the big elk. The biodiversity project, some of our, you know, local group has identified, I gather, only one other community has identified more life forms within its boundaries compared to Michoson in British Columbia. And then we have our regional role. We're well known for our rural nature and the preservation of forests and farmland. So this, this council has, of course, declared a climate emergency and a biodiversity crisis, a global crisis. And saying we're going to pay more attention, do what we can. And this setting up a biodiversity plan is kind of part of that. We've also advocated U B C M for provincial action and funding for biodiversity protection. And we identified that kind of plan like this in our strategic plan. National assets, what that's about, the national, nationally, the public sector accounting board is turning to local government, saying we should have asset management plans for all of our hard assets, like roads and buildings and everything else. Now the move is afoot that we actually identify natural assets because of the value that they hold for us. For example, if we fill in our wetland, then we end up having to deal with flooding. So if we take care of a wetland and flood, the water gets slowed down and we don't have such trouble and so much financial, don't have to bear such terrible burdens when we have the kinds of problems that we get into with atmospheric rivers that we saw over in the mainland. So good financial management, which means we're going to get on to this. You've had a chance to look at the outline and what I'm hoping is that you might provide me some comments either tonight or in writing following the meeting. MEAS is looking for feedback. We're prepared to manage the project. We're sharing the outline. Since the MEAS meeting, I added a few things to the, to, to the to the plan. So this is version one. We strengthened the wording around the conservation area zone at P four, the one that we're thinking about for the buffer land. Counselor Shukin, that idea of, of if we set up a new conservation zone, maybe it could be used in different places. It might not be called conservation zone, but whatever is decided in the end. We modified the vision slightly, statement slightly from the MEAS meeting and then added language about the local conservation fund that Counselor Epp was mentioning a moment ago. So the outline would go to staff, to, to our planner, to the Shanoo Nation, the Agriculture Advisory Committee, the various organizations mentioned in the document. We have to think about, talk about priority actions and edit the document or add and take away. The one area where there might be some financial consideration for the project itself, although it's not upon us at the moment, is mapping. The CRD also passed a recent bylaw called the Biodiversity Service or Program Bylaw. And the idea is that they're going to gradually build up a regional biodiversity approach. And then I just want to report to you another development, which is the Michoson Biodiversity Project. The Bilston Creek, Bilston Watershed Habitat Protection Association and the Michoson Foundation came together and made an application to the UVIC Environmental Law Clinic and the project was accepted. And the, the project that they were, or what they've asked the law clinic to do is to take a look at the bylaws in Michoson relating to environmental protection and then recommend to us what changes might be appropriate around protecting biodiversity, sensitive ecosystems and natural assets. The product would be a public report prepared over the UVIC Environmental Law Clinic with recommendations on bylaw reform. So developing this plan at the same time as this request from the, some community groups, I'm hoping can come together and we can, you know, get more and more serious as we're able to on protecting sensitive areas. So any comments tonight or thoughts or ideas about proceeding? Counselor Shukin?
Thank you, Counselor Gray. I, I look forward to hearing more about the natural asset component. And you, you know, I think we were probably all familiar with the, the classic, what's become the classic case of Gibson's and their natural asset inventory. And especially something like an aquifer, I think. Mr. Pyatt sold stomping ground as a similar thing, where you have an aquifer that supplies the community and of course, if it's lost or damaged, you, you are short of a valuable asset. So how that applies to Michoson would be, yeah, it'll, it'll be interesting to see. And your, your example about the, the wetlands and flood prevention, this is a good one. I found myself quite interested in, and kind of excited as I went through the plan. As it moves along, the question might be is how to make it practical? And if there's a, you know, once this gets formulated, even doing a bit of an annual schedule. I mean, invasive picking is, is a big one, but, but just invasive picking, watershed and streamside restoration and stuff like that. So it, it's possibly a kind of a neat place for a whole bunch of groups to sort of meet and co-lease. So at least be aware of what each person is doing.
Thank you. And you're right, the, the Gibson's project is, is quite helpful to look through and see. And the aquifer is, I think, is it their first or their second big priority? Mary Little?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for this, the possible outline. Certainly for all our assets, include, including engineered assets as well as national assets. The goal of the asset management is the same usually. In other reports that I've seen is to sustained service delivery. And so this balancing, this involves balancing the levels of the service, the risk and the costs associated with it. And so the caveat is that with engineered, as opposed to engineered assets, green infrastructure or natural assets have co-benefits like carbon sequestration, increased oxygen in the air, that kind of thing. And so I was, similar to what Counselor Shukin said, I'll be looking forward to more tangible or more practical elements to this high level plan that, that is the draft here as well. Often when, when a natural asset plan is implemented prior to that, there's an inventory done. So it'd be nice if there's some kind of an inventory of our natural assets. And I'll be interested to see how this will be relating to that sustainable service delivery within the, the district. Because otherwise, I guess it should be called a conservation plan. If it's not going to be related to, to actual services. Anyways, that's, those are my thoughts.
Thank you very much. Counselor Epp?
I'm just wondering how this relates to private property.
So one way it relates with the discussion that you started earlier, mentioned earlier about the conservation fund. So not that that would happen, but we, you know, I put it into the document, so we would be thinking about it. And the way the conservation funding worked in, I'll say central B C, Kootenays is it? Kootenays where we heard the, the example, the, there was a referendum and the communities there decided to put in fifteen dollars per household, not a tax, but a levy. And, and then that money is in a big bank account and, and the dollars are given out to different projects, including private landowners. So people who want to do certain things on the property that require funding, they can access, well, through a process, an application, they can, they can access the money. And so that's a, it's sort of a concrete example. But otherwise, I think what, what we would be shooting for would be to build these values in the community so that it's sort of what we do, whether or not it's the district doing it or whether it's not people in their own, on their own properties. And we have the example, I think, in the Bilston Creek or the Bilston Watershed Group where the work's done on both private and public land. So people get involved, they're interested, they welcome people aboard. MISC, the Michoson Invasive Species Cooperative, is working on some, at least one very large private property. So the notion is to, it's how we walk, it's how we talk and people get enthused about it and get involved. That's just a couple of thoughts, but, but I think the notion is to, is to be both about our public land, but also trying to talk about how, you know, what Michoson stands for. Okay, well, thanks for the comments this evening, folks. Yes, Counselor Shukin?
So Counselor Gray, next steps with this, you'll take it back to MEAS, no doubt, but old bay. Could we expect to see something in the next few months as a follow-up?
I'd be happy to bring it along. We'll, we'll keep revising and working on it depending on input. And, and so at the moment right now, we've started sending it around to people for comment. So I want to get it out to MISC, for example, to the Michoson Foundation, to the different groups to provide some feedback. And it'll be a bit of a job, tumbling and working with, with the input and then bring it back here. So I guess maybe I'll say a couple of months, just depending on how far we get. My goal, so not, maybe not MEAS goal, but my goal would be that it not be a big document. That it be fairly tight and to the mayor's point, that there be some concrete accuracy here, which we can go back to and say, okay, that's doable. We can get that done and we can measure it. We'll see how we go, but I appreciate your support tonight. Thank you. Well, that ends my section in terms of the environment and natural areas. Portfolio, and maybe now we can move Counselor Shukin to community planning?
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. A few things to run through, beginning with the report on school finances and management matters. And thanks to Counselor Donaldson as well as Mr. Pyatt, Mr. Creek, Ms. Miller, Far Chief Dunlop and also Tina as well. And we all had a share and input into this. And again, this was, the impetus was this, sorry, for this was at our meeting in January and Counselor Donaldson and myself were tasked with doing this report to look at financial matters, revenue expectations, human resource needs, booking matters and then high level operation matters. So, so committee, there's, there's some other work here that flows from the plan. We can maybe talk about how we do that, but the one thing I should have asked in my report is maybe a motion to receive it at some point. So if I could, I just wanted to run through the report really quickly. So section one, sorry, the report is on page forty five. So section one, an overview of the, the task, but the key thing is a clear acknowledgement that the school will be managed over the long term as a multi-use recreational, cultural and community center, which is consistent with the motion that we passed in December of twenty twenty four. But with that, we're talking about recreational, cultural and community center. So that acknowledgement drives prioritization of uses, rates for use, revenue expectation and then again, management and operations practices. So again, rates are, you want to set them. So there's a cost recovery element, but you don't want to set them too high. So you might exclude people. So one of the balances there. So section two clarifies that the report is only focused on the newer section of the school and the old section, as we know it, is under lease for MACA. That's just where we were able to go with this one now. So I, I did hear Mr. Yocum's comments earlier, but we were able only to look at essentially the, the newer version of the school. So section two continues and the good news is there is revenue coming in. A hundred and twenty one thousand sixteen dollars in twenty twenty four compared with operating expenses, two hundred thousand five hundred and fifty six dollars. That, you know, covers where the revenue came from, a mix of rental and lease payments. That revenue offset costs to a level of about sixty point three percent. One thing that to keep in mind is the continued evolution of the school. So remember, it was purchased in twenty seventeen. The big event of getting the funds to rent a view, sorry, rent the gym occurred in twenty nineteen, I believe, with the last council. And then we're now able to move it along in terms of getting, getting people in the gym and in the classrooms. So section three covers the recommendations and this is where we might have some further discussion. So key ones are that we set minimum cost recovery at a sixty percent level, that the user definitions be developed further and clear definitions, that we keep the classrooms open for rent with one exception for a possible lease arrangement. And that we look toward developing a name for this facility that better reflects its actual use. And section four contains the draft of vision for discussion. Just a quick word on this. It begins with an overview of the prioritization of the uses and what we want the facility to be, a place to exercise, learn, create, engage in activities that foster personal growth and social connection. It also notes that it serves as an important public safety function as well. The second paragraph emphasizes the facility's finances, which are of course quite important, particularly at this day, right this time. So key thing, community use is prioritized, but we will always keep our eyes open for revenue generating opportunities. So, and then it closes with a look back and a look forward. So now, section five, I found the most interesting to go through or to develop. And I want to thank Mr. Creek especially for his input in all of this. And so it's a projection of revenues over the next five years and also we'll look at how that revenue, we expect it to offset operating costs. And I wonder, Mr. Creek, could you walk us through the numbers, how you generate? And I wonder, Mr. Creek, could you walk us through the numbers, how you generated these and what we should take from them?
Thank you, through the chair. As I said, we've, the district's generated over a hundred thousand dollars of revenue for twenty twenty four compared to a budget of just over sixty thousand. So the number is going to be far better than what was projected in the financial plan for twenty twenty four to twenty twenty eight. The projections from twenty five through twenty nine, based on the district getting an additional lease in the school. So that's going to help up that number and solidify some revenue coming in. And then along with the classroom, the fire chief has found a number of additional training courses to go in there, so that's going to be a bump in revenue there. Then as the pickleball club indicated, they are using it significantly now. It's ramped up through twenty twenty four, and then we're now collecting a good amount each month in twenty twenty five. So it's likely they even exceed the estimated revenue, that was based on a number from January, we received a payment that I just started to note. So that'll be higher. And then as Counselor Shukin had mentioned, the recovery of about sixty percent kind of falls in line with the market analysis that Sanich had done in twenty nineteen. We showed their facilities ranging anywhere from. A high fifty percent to all the way to ninety percent, ninety percent was on the golf course. And the other ones that had slightly lower, had either a pool or a hockey ring. The one that compared to us was the sixty percent, just had a gym and a few rooms for rent. That's our closest comparison based on experience. Basically what you end up seeing in a recreation facility in the community, it's not a hundred percent cost recovery. The sixty to seventy percent level is really what you end up getting as as Counselor Shukin had mentioned. Do you want to keep it open to the community and not exclude people who are less fortunate than others? So based on those numbers, as you can see on the lower table, we do take a bit of a dip in twenty twenty five. That's because we did have the rental to elections B C in twenty twenty four, generated a significant amount of money. But with full years of leases in twenty twenty six, we get back up over sixty percent. And we will drive that forward to a really, really nice number. Again, hopefully twenty twenty eight, same election B C in there and get up to eighty percent. But going forward, we're looking really good. If we can get one more lease on top of the one that we hope to get in twenty twenty five, things will be looking really good. The amount of money that we're getting from training revenue, from renting out the classrooms on a daily basis. Really need to rent that thing up seventy two days to basically cover the entire year of lease. And we're on, we're on track for that already for twenty twenty five, so I do feel confident in those numbers going forward. Any questions?
Well, I've I've got one. Mr. Creek, it's it's stated here that the revenue projections are based on conservative estimates. Just verify that you think that's appropriate.
Thank you, through the chair. Yeah, it's it's on the lower end, I would say, but I do, just being an accountant, I've got a guess on the low end rather than set expectations too high. So I feel this is pretty, I'm fairly confident in these numbers coming forward. Anything extra from additional training coming in. Perhaps Westshore actually locking in for the long term, things they uptake in their courses. We can exceed these numbers, but based on a number of factors.
Maybe I can ask a question, Mr. Creek, which is as regards the, you mentioned training revenues. Do training revenues show on the diagram here or would we need, or the chart rather?
Through the chair, yeah, the the training revenue goes into the classrooms. So they they are just renting out the classrooms on a daily basis or weekly basis, in the case of the Coast Guard this year. On a daily basis, two hundred fifty dollars a day. And if we had seventy two rented periods, basically we'd end up getting what we would collect on average from lease.
And so maybe the question would be, as the training, there's training done also by the fire department over there on its own? And are those numbers recorded here or would we need to set up some a bill back or something like that to demonstrate?
Through the chair, if there's training taking place in the fire department, we do not have a fee for that booked in. So I believe that will all be based on if she's doing her own internal training for recruits or internal staff. There would be no revenue associated with that, it would only be in the case of bringing other people in. But that's where she basically puts any of that training out in the school.
It it just makes me think that it would be helpful just as the years go by. If we did an arrangement where there was actually a charge to the fire department, just in the paper. Billback arrangement, we'd be able to see how much the fire department's using it well, it seems like it's one of the important uses that we have. The second question I had was, I went back to the our our third quarter finance report. Trying to sort out. Of course, the number is not there because we've, this is a little bit further along in the year. But the twenty twenty four operations is two hundred thousand five hundred fifty six dollars. That appears to be the entire school. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct, that's the whole, all the utilities in charge.
Yeah, that makes it difficult then when we move to a percentage because it's sort of a numerator denominator problem. The numerator doesn't include MACA and the denominator includes MACA. So picking a number like the sixty five percent is hard to equate until we get a little bit further along. But I'll mention something about that a little bit later.
Yeah, that's a good, it's a good point, yeah. Sort of, I just have a few more things to say then. So one of the. So one of the things that I was hoping to do with this is, again, we we have this question about lease or rent. We had talked about that, my assumption for the longest time was, yeah, just simply we're going to lease the thing out as soon as we can. And in discussion with Chief Dunlop, Mr. Creek, Mr. Payette, there is the possibility of doing very well in terms of rent. Renting two of the rooms and the potential of leasing one of the classrooms out. That's stable income versus the the flexibility that rentals give us as well. Setting the the cost recovery threshold, I think, is really important. And I, to me, that's one of the things that's come out of it, maybe we're going to look a little closer at that, though. Because if we decided to bring on some sort of a staff member, a contractor, volunteer, whatever. We need to keep that in mind as well, that we're always looking at that cost recovery threshold. So I've I've heard the comments earlier today about the importance of bringing on, what do you want to call it? Qualified staff, professional staff. People at this table are always going to be balancing the 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 expenditures versus revenue expectations. So, you know, the the, I don't know, the impact on taxation and all that. So it's it's not a simple move to just simply hire someone or a contractor. I can say is that staff are now working at refining the booking process. And Mr. Creek has dove headlong into that. And I I I think we're going to see some improvements as we go. But again, the management of the school is an evolving process, especially in a district where we're trying to manage our costs. So that's always going to be a challenge for us and and I think we're working on that admirably, admirably.
So maybe just on that point, Counselor Shukin, it sounds like we're actually at the point of the staff are running that booking. And so it's only if that's not working out or it becomes too. Too much workload that we're looking at other options. So to some degree, we've we've got to the point where the staff will be looking after it already.
Yeah, and one of the recommendations is that Mr. Payette keep an eye on workload. And as we move toward the next budget cycle, keep in mind what what he sees happening with with our resources, so. Okay, one, okay, so if I could, so the rest of the the report. Briefly on the question of rentals versus leases, booking processes, personnel, as we're talking about now. And then again, some lingering questions about the funds. And uses of the school in terms of purchase and payment. I I know that there was one person a few weeks ago who had a question about the purchase price and payback. So again, it was purchased for one point five million. It's now assessed at three point three two million, so good investment on the chosen's part. The original purchase was drawn, there was all, this this I believe is gospel now. So we've talked about it, it comes from the police reserve. I let, it it did not, it came from the general capital capital reserve. So an annual fee, annual amount of forty two thousand five hundred is being redirected back to this reserve. Those payments began in twenty eighteen and they will continue until twenty fifty three. So the one thing I was hoping to go back, I I won't lose sight of, minimum, we might do a motion to receive, but sorry.
Yeah, just on that that point there, I think it might be more accurate to say that. So the school's operating at a loss, so we're not redirecting money from the loss into the reserve, there isn't any money there to redirect. I would say it's more, it's part of your tax bill every year that we are taking forty two thousand five hundred dollars from the collected taxes and putting it toward that reserve. It's in the school section of the budget, but it's not really coming from the school per se.
Okay. Mr. Creek.
Mr. Creek, sure, from your accounting perspective.
Through the chair, it kind of depends on how you want to look at it. You could say the revenue is going to pay back the school, and then all the operating costs are supported by property taxes. Or you could say, no, it's like all the revenue is going to pay off the expenses. Property taxes going back to pay off the reserve.
I guess.
Half dozen of the other.
I guess the point is the school is working, is operating at a loss, so it's hard to say the money's coming from their particularity. But fair enough, thank you.
So back to section three. There are a number of recommendations made, quite a few, actually. The first one is that the vision and guiding principle statement be shared for input for council and community input. With the goal that articulate community desires for the facility. Now, I I think that the vision is not just sort of a, you know, a nice airy fairy statement that hovers over everything. It's it's something that actually should be used as a test in case there's conflicts with, you know, groups wanting it. Say someone wants to come and use the gym for three months, how do we deal with that? Hopefully, the vision might help us sort of understand. Or, you know, a great new idea comes forward, like a third party wants to come and lease out, you know, the 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 facility and rent it for us. So does the vision help us with understand what we might, what our decision might be around that? So Counselor Donaldson and I have put forward a vision. I I don't think either of us think it's, you know, hundred percent there, but the question I have for everyone is your thoughts and. Maybe how do we work to improve this or further test it? And that's on in section four. And I'm I'm happy to come back within, sorry, from your input. Counselor Donaldson was was really great in terms of helping guide this, so she and I can provide another draft if we want to.
And maybe we might answer that question and then and then ask for questions about the document as whole and then come to our list of one to.
Yeah, sorry.
No, that's okay, I I think it's a good question. I'll say I I quite appreciate the vision, so I don't have any comments about it right now. One thing I do notice, though, in in what we got from Carol Voight just earlier on, you know, consulting our main clients and considering their feedback. So probably, although we'll talk about it, it would be good to check in with users and others. But any other comments about the vision just now, Mary Little?
Yeah, thank you. I I I would, the the paragraphs that you have on on page forty eight, I would say are the guiding principles. And vision statements are usually what you describe as airy fairy that we can put on the building. And I would prefer that it be a succinct statement such as the Michoacan School or whatever we decide to call it. Let's not call it the old school because it's so confusing for staff with the heritage school, the old school, and Hans Helgerson School. So whatever we decide to call it, the Michoacan Old Schools, a multi-use community center focused on activities of cultural recreation, arts. And protective services training. At at a community center or something like that. So it would be nice to have the vision as a statement, like a one statement of what it is. And then the guiding principles would be more fulsome. Anyways, just my thoughts.
And and you know, you're totally right, like when I was looking, you know, kind of examples of vision statements, they're really short. So that's why the the little tag on guiding principle statement. Because I think the rest of it is actually quite important, like especially at this juncture, but but I think you're right.
Yeah, and I think what was missed in on page forty five was what you have in bold here is a multi-use recreation, culture and community center. It really missed the element of training and the protective services services training is what has kept us going at the school. Or provided at least some income, and I would like to see that continue. And and so I'd like to see it in the vision statement that it is a protective service training center as well. Because that has put us Michoacan on the map in in a lot of ways with other communities coming here for for training. And and it provides other training for for citizens like first aid and and an educational center. So I would like to see training somehow incorporated into this.
Counselor, did you want to add anything at this point on the vision statement?
No, I kind of agree with Mary Little on those statements, I think it should be should be short. I think on, where it is on page forty five, the part under emergency services could maybe include the training and there. But yeah, I I think there's could be a little bit, a little revised, but I do appreciate the report, appreciate the work Counselor Donaldson. Counselor Shukin and and staff put into it because it is nice to, really nice to have it and to use as a basis to move forward. I just want to say, as my colleague Counselor Shukin has suggested or mentioned very beginning. This document has evolved as has the whole school site for a number of years, but even going through this in the last month or two. The vision statement, interesting the comments we're hearing right now because we shrunk it, we grew it, we shrunk it, we grew it. And so Counselor Shukin says, no, shall we have to go back and and have more? And we did put the training in there, we just called it something a little bit different, we changed that around a number of times too. So it is always evolving and we did recognize that, yeah, it has to be shorter, but we really want to give as much information as possible. For us to at least have a foundation as the committee whole could actually chime in on, so appreciate the input on that, thank you.
Thank you. Mary Little.
Oh, I was wondering if I could ask for the chair to our CFO, what what is the projections? Or, yeah, the the revenues that we receive from the other half of the school from the MACA and our part? What what revenue do we, does the district receive from that?
Through the chair, so that money is actually included in the lease number at the top. And in twenty twenty four, we received just under seventy seven hundred dollars.
Oh, say that again, so so for twenty twenty four, the Art Pod and MACA, the revenue from that was seventy seven hundred dollars?
Correct. So follow up question to that, Mr. Creek. So in some ways, the the current situation with MACA, the, just just back to count the point Counselor Gray made. Like if we're looking at revenues from the whole building. The sixty percent threshold is pretty accurate now for, in terms of, like, we're including the MACA side?
Through the chair.
Correct.
Yeah, that it's like, that's all revenue that we have.
Yeah.
From every angle. So that's everything plus the expenses, it is included in there.
Okay.
It's just.
Great.
Okay, okay, so that's that's helpful, and I could see it on the expenditure side, but because the noted said. We're restricting our discussion to the. Side of the school directly managed by the district, I assumed it wouldn't be in the revenue side. But that does raise a different point. Really, a lot of this discussion is kind of maximizing, we're seeing where the number, you know. really, a lot of this discussion is kind of maximizing, we're seeing where the number, you know, where the numbers will land. But we haven't tackled the MACA side yet and there are some issues there with regards, you know, we appreciate the role of MAC and all that they do in the Art Pod, the Senior Center. And we have commercial renters on that side. And my understanding is they're not, they're paying rents that are less than might otherwise be available. Putting us in an awkward position with regards to the community charter and not being able to subsidize businesses in any way, like at arm's length or however you do it, we're just not able to do that. So we probably have to come back to that question before we land on the percentage, you know, what makes sense. So I just raised, you know, raised that issue of, you know, delving into the MACA part so we can get to just that with regard to the recommendation in, of that particular recommendation of income versus expenditure.
Okay. So, Counsel Gray. There is also a recommendation that the school be renamed to better reflect the facility's future use. What I might suggest is that Counsel Donaldson and I do another pass at the vision statement. And once we get greater comfort with that as a, as a group, as a committee, then we look at tackling the, the question of the name. I know we've, uh, we have had some discussions about that. Um, I feel like that is as yet though an unresolved matter, but, uh, maybe we can leave that for right now until we nail the vision, so.
Sure, we can leave that. I think my concern reading that, that was the, uh, number ten recommendation. I thought, no way. Um, Counsel, big effort at that and went around and we can't keep asking till we get the decision we want. You know, and so I just feel like done, you know, maybe next term someone can look at it if it comes up. But right now, it wasn't the highest priority for me in terms of, you had a lot of good stuff here that we're all gonna need to tackle.
Yeah.
That one I'm less excited about, but I'll leave it to you guys to, to discuss that and just think about. Let's say it doesn't work out the next time, we're not gonna ask again, are we? Like, set that up. Thanks.
But can I ask, um, folks how they feel about parking the name thing? Like, again, it's even a question of whether we take it on or not officially.
Well, you heard my point of view, just park it, but others can speak.
I don't wanna park it. I think we need to decide on a name so that it can be on leases, it can be on advertising. People don't wander around trying to find a school and not find out that it's actually not a school, but yet it is a school. And it's, uh, it's very confusing, uh, for people. It's very confusing for staff trying to, we just had it recently, there was a mix-up about something because people didn't really understand where they were going or what they were expecting to see. So I think, uh, I'm not sure how to go about it again. And, uh, but I do think that we need to try to come up with something.
Counsel Donaldson?
Yeah, I, I'm still thinking that we need to, um, this needs more work, obviously we know that. Uh, that a name will evolve, but one of the things is we keep hearing and it's very important, um, and, and the experience that I had working with West Shore when they're advertising all the recreation programs that they wanna do at the school or have been doing, they had the address wrong. They had it at the actual museum. And so I said, well, just, just don't even worry about your old sandwich board that says this. However, um, and I looked it up, you know, on the assessment website, it's got the right address, but when you go to Google it, it doesn't have come up. It's just a matter of contacting Google or whoever it is, the businesses contact. So we know the appropriate deliveries go to the appropriate address and not, uh, you know, have a package delivered to the museum that's not open in the winter. But when you need to get that, you know, you know, right now it says M'Chosen School on the side of it, so people can see it. But if your GPS isn't directing you to appropriate address, that is a problem. And I'm certain that, uh, that can be dealt with right away, for sure.
And I think Mayor Little, you've spoken before, but on the name question?
Yeah, on the name question, so, uh, I'm interested in bringing this back. Uh, once you have, uh, done some more work on the, the vision, solidifying that, then we can, uh, move forward with, with, uh, renaming it. I think it really needs to be renamed because it's, it causes so much confusion. And if we are going to be advertising having one consistent message, the old school, M'Chosen School, I think we just need to call it something reflecting the vision. Um, you know, the multi-use facility, I don't, I, I don't have any suggestions right now, but um, I don't wanna park this, but I'll bring it back for further conversation, um, once we have the, the vision nailed down.
I think you got what you need on that one, Counsel Shukin, Counsel Donaldson?
Yeah, consensus seems to not be to race ahead, all due respect to Counsel Gray, but, but keep thinking of the name stuff.
I, I did have a, a question, just in terms of the, the work in it, you're talking about this being something you're still working on. And that was managing expenditures. So we've got stuff here about, um, income, but just a single line about expenditures. And we haven't really looked at that in the budget process because, well, it wasn't the nature of our review earlier. Um, when I did go back to look at the third quarter, I couldn't quite see where the two-hundred-thousand-dollar number came from. I'm, I'm okay with that, it's a real number, I believe. But I think it might be helpful to, for our CFO or staff to look and say, well, is there opportunities there to manage our expenditures if they're better? I don't know, I don't know what there was there. The thing I just wanted to note was the value, we're talking about that sixty percent and we maybe have to wait until we get to it, but the notion of the value of peer comparisons. You know, and earlier media had asked about some peer comparisons about our fire department. And it was, nobody was totally sure about it, but we're now using peer comparisons to try and figure out things. So it is a valid, um, a valid tool to judge where we're at. Counsel, did anyone else have any questions on the document itself or issues they wanted to get clear about? Uh, and then we'll hand it back to Counsel Shukin to lead us through the. Any other? Yes, Mayor Little?
We may have to make a difficult decision, decision at some point to maybe, for instance, rent out the three classrooms um, as a training facility on an ongoing basis, so we have that income coming in. If we are moving towards hiring a part-time coordinator for the facility. Uh, because, um, we can't have everything and we certainly at this point can't afford. Um, we don't have the funds to support a full-time position or even a full, or even a half-time position. I think it would be great, since we don't have a staff member here at the hall who has the capacity uh, to be that coordinator, to look after the bookings and to make sure that the, the gym is or, or the building's safe and secure. And that those, many of those operational pieces are still being done by the fire chief outside of her, her, um, um, job description. Um, so I would, uh, I think at some point we're gonna need to make a difficult decision. I'm not talking about the gym. But, uh, perhaps, uh, we rent out on a permanent basis two of the classrooms for a training center, for instance. Would, which would bring that sixty percent up. Um, so we may be in a position at some point to hire somebody, um, as a coordinator and I see that that, that, that would be wise, uh, rather than have multiple people look after it and uh, people here at the hall trying to do it off the side of their desks. Those are just some of my thoughts and I, I understand that those are difficult conversations and difficult decisions. It would also help if we have more income from the MACA side. Uh, because as many of you know, artist studios, um, are hard to come by and they're very expensive to rent. Um, and, uh, it from, if we're receiving seventy-seven hundred dollars for those, um, that's, that the rent obviously is very small for, for each of those, um, artists, uh, studios. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Shukin?
So, the, um, just, just touching on what Mayor Little was just saying about the recommendation is that two classrooms be opened for rent by the community, first responder, commercial clients. Then the recommendation that follows after that, that a leasing option be explored for at least one classroom. Now, part of the, um, the goal with this is to give clarity, uh, you know, direction to staff. And I just wonder if, um, if we're ready to, uh, dig into that a little bit more, or if Mister Pyatt thinks he has time or like, because again, one of the key questions that led to this, do we lease all of the classrooms? Do we rent all of the classrooms? Um, so, yeah.
I could offer a thought, which is, um, following on Mayor Little's, um, intervention. The, the language here is at least one classroom. So if the market out there, if there's somebody who says, look, I, I'm happy to buy three, you know, let it be known there are a couple of classrooms available and see what comes. And the, the market might answer that. That may or may not be helpful, but that's one idea.
Yeah.
Mister Pyatt, did you wanna add something on that?
We're, we are currently, um, working with an entity for the classroom potentially, um, through word of mouth, so um, we could potentially advertise spaces available, available. Um, I personally am a little reluctant to shoot out, uh, a global advertising and school space because it invites, um, the world to M'Chosen. And carefully ask for itself. I think we should do this methodically.
So, Mister Pyatt, you mean methodically, meaning just don't rush into anything? Okay, okay, great, great. Um, okay.
Go ahead, uh, an idea that might help with this as well, which is on the very final page of fifty-four of the agenda. There's a description, or there's a table there showing, I think this is everybody who's rented something at that end of the school this past year. And you know, I, I couldn't guess, you know, who's rented what, uh, and how much they rented. But looking, if one were to look at the twenty-twenty-four utilization, we might find out, I'm not sure who one of those groups is actually interested in, in more than what they got last year. It might help the workload question as well. If we just contacted all those groups and said, what are you interested in? Have you gotten anything you'd like? And, and just, so in other words, be proactive that way. Um, and then find out, find out if, if, um, you know, what's that market, not, not the, not the big ad publicly, but just confirm with these people what their interests are. Maybe there's one of these as a standout, um, um, leaser or a potential lease. Okay, without knowing, I, I, it's hard to say because we don't have the information here, but I'm sure that Mister Creek can assess that out for you, for Counsel Shukin and Donaldson.
Great. Okay, so, Counsel Donaldson and I will go back and add to this, I think, and, uh, sorry, revise it further, especially around the vision, but, uh, yeah.
I think that sounds good. The Counsel.
Uh, I just thought we'd move receipt.
Awesome, thank you.
So moved by Counsel, seconded by Mayor Little, Counsel Shukin?
Yeah, um, hey, I just, again, wanna thank everyone and I just mentioned that no AI was used in the generation of this report.
Oh, wait a minute, that's kind of retro.
Blood, sweat and tears, I guess, so no AI. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think that, that sounds good. I, I just had one other comment about the report and, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, so thanks to staff and and to, um, the counselors involved and, and others who provided input. Um, and that was just when we're looking at the rents, I guess, or, or getting going on the MACA side of it. Um, we have an arrangement, I think, where we have the shared expenses that turns up and again, we've seen that in some of our documents. But just the idea of when we look at rents, we're gonna be less than in the city, I presume. But we do wanna pay off things like our insurance, our maintenance, our, um, utilities. You know, so the rents are covering those things that we're not, you know, subsidizing all of the operation. And then how high the rents be, I guess that compares to, to get to the market, um, so that we're not subsidizing for the commercial renters.
Right. I appreciate that because, uh, the one thing that I recall from the very beginning of this whole project was that the school, anything that was rented there to not compete, uh, so harshly with, uh, our community business uh, center that we have. And so that we be complementary of, of that, as well as the complementary, um, aspect to both the community house and the community hall when we're bringing in things, so that we don't undercut anybody, we all actually work together, um, more holistically. And so keeping the rents, um, attainable for our rural community, so we can actually attract people here, but not so low that, you know, it doesn't help our other businesses. So we, we wanna be good neighbors in that regard too.
Right. Now, we touched on the pinks, I think, that came in here, at least for trying to tackle the issues that are in here. And it may be that you'll wanna have some conversation with folks about that as you, as you work forward. So, can I call the question?
Oh, Counsel Shukin?
Yeah.
So I'll call the question, all in favor? That's approved, thank you.
So, I, um, have just a few more things through my update. I'll try and go really quickly here. Um, Parks and Trails Matters, uh, you asked Counsel Gray about Duke Road East. So, we have had some conversations with our contract engineer. They've done a site tour or a site walk of Duke Road East. Uh, as yet, there's been no report, um, prepared, no as-yet budget estimate or anything like that. That will come in time. Um, I'll connect with Mister Pyatt as to how it reaches people at this, at this table. So it's, it's a work in progress. Um, so Parks and Trails Master Plan, really quickly, we're, we're underway with it. We've, uh, dedicated or identified, uh, two subcommittees that will work on the plan. And again, these folks will look at specific elements of the Parks and Trails process, Parks and Trails Master Plan process. I've got to hear like Parks and Trail standards, management plans for the parks, future priorities, et cetera. And then another group will be like more the drafting group and the public engagement side. Uh, that material comes back to the Parks and Trails Chair, relevant, sorry, table. Relevant information will come back to this table as well. Uh, like the following. So, we identified a number of values and principles that we want to begin with uh, and identify in terms of informing the Parks and Trails Master Plan. So things like connectivity, the fact that we build trails in a meaningful way to connect, whether with, uh, to the galloping goose, for example, or with neighborhoods. Um, respect for the environment, so support for wildlife corridors, we've heard that several times tonight. Um, manage risks like invasives, flooding, potential fire. And, um, and again, confirm matters like, this is the goal. Confirm matters around our approach to mountain biking, commercial dog walking and dogs in parks. We, I think we kinda know that now, but just, uh, touching more specifically in terms of our parks and trails. Acknowledging First Nation traditional ancestral connection to the lands. Um, also accessibility, um, and then support for new opportunities. Any, I, I guess I'm coming to counsel this, see if there's anything you might add to that list. Um, one I have, it's a really obvious one, is that, um, the natural environment is one of the critical, like the central elements of, um, M'Chosen's, you know, character. So, and I think Parks and Trails has a big role in that. So that's one I, I, I think I'm gonna bring back to people. Any? If, if you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I don't have any right now and others are seeming nodding, I think. And to, to, to what you've laid out. Um, but, but perhaps we could all take a look at it and offer any thoughts that should be taken on. I think the, um, yeah, generally I like it. Is this, I, and I just don't know, are these driven out of the, the existing master plan or more that you're developing a new?
Some of them come out of.
Not complaining, by the way, just curious.
Yeah, some of them come out of the existing Trails Master Plan?
Yeah.
Like connectivity, for example, so, yeah.
Great. One of the things I think that I'm, um, maybe we're all concerned about is as the population grows on our borders, we're gonna have more and more people. I was talking to Jim Nan about this the other night at the Active Transportation Network get-together. And, uh, and I'm not sure I've got the right language, but it's kinda like hardening our parks, you know, or being ready for more people coming, you know, what are we gonna do? And, and so it just doesn't really fit a, a vision or something, but dealing with, with more traffic. I'm not excited about, I'm excited that people come to M'Chosen and enjoy the natural world here. And I particularly think of the regional parks that are set up and, and ready. Our smaller parks are not so ready in the sense that they're, they're ready for the smaller, you know, less use. Um, and somehow balancing that so that, so that, um, people come to the big, big parks, uh, from the city and less so to the smaller, um, or parks that can't take, I guess is what I'm thinking about. So I'm out here protecting the, protecting the environment, protecting the trails. So anyway, just to add that idea in, you know, what hardening of our parks need to be done. And I mentioned it, uh, our last meeting, I was hoping that the beachheads might be, you know, And I mentioned it our last meeting, I was hoping that the beachheads might be, you know, incorporated and that's, that's maybe a location where we will be having the most traffic. And how do we approach that? I'm sure there's good examples down in Oregon or up in Tofino or wherever there might be. Just ideas of whether it be signage or whether it be parking, limiting parking or whether where do garbage receptables go? We actually have to do that. Can the CRD help us with that, even if it's not theirs when they contract to pick up the garbage? Those sorts of ideas I'm wondering about. They're not necessarily need to be in the plan, but things that come to my mind.
And to your point, Council Gray, some of the uses of our Parks and Trails are kind of niche, but they can potentially be damaging as well. So for example, commercial dog walkers going down some of our smaller trails or mountain bikers also going down our smaller trails to connect to the goose and all that. So it's, it's a good point, yeah. Okay, I'll just keep going here. So open house, the plan is to have an open house at the school on Saturday, April fifth, from two PM to four thirty PM. It'll be very similar to the Active Transportation Plan in that it's a drop-in session. And more to come on that as we go here. And there's the rudiments of a broom pole for the Bufferland on Sunday, March twenty-third. And thank you to Mr. Payet for his support for that. That'd be running roughly from ten o'clock until one. And there will be more information forthcoming on that as well. Again, biodiversity, Macho's has a huge invasive problem. And broom is just one of them, but it gets just overwhelms pretty much everything. So the fun thing, though, about doing this now at the Bufferland is you really get a chance to see change and what your labor can do. Because the broom is all like tall as me or, and you can wipe it out very quickly. So I've got a spot that we can all work on and give a few hours and we'll see the world of difference. So. Finishing off really quickly, I attended a seminar with the Municipal Protected Areas Project. Council Gray mentioned this in his biodiversity plan, that it's the B C Conservation Database where they are looking for the addition of lands that are suitable natural areas, meaning can be commitment of thirty percent of land and waters, waterways conserved by twenty thirty. So we may have some parks that we can add to that, Bufferland potentially. Counsel Rep covered the, the session that was held by Douglas for Conservation Partnership. So that's it. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And we have a pink that sort of deals with some of these issues here. And I just thought I might, this is from Darren Brown. And one thing that I wanted to, I don't know if we can answer all of it. I mean, he's calling, obviously, for, you know, good use of funds. We have a little bit of a stickiness around the, you know, this issue of we've got an active transportation going, and then we're talking about the Duke Road East Trail and that we're out of sync. So just raising that issue. We are a bit out of sync on that. But the one that I thought we could speak to usefully tonight is the use of subcommittees at P T O S. And while, so I would just clarify from my perspective, the utility of the subcommittee has got a few people to work on something to bring back to the committee. I don't, when I've read your minutes and things, I'm not, and I'm saying this instead of you, Counsel Shook, but the idea is you want some people to do some work and then bring it back so it can be discussed in the open and everything. It's just, it's just to get the work done.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so, well, I, I sort of take the point that Mr. Brown's making. I think there's, there's also just getting work done. Sometimes helpful to get a couple of people together. As you've done tonight, you've brought us a report on the school. And now we've had a pretty good discussion about it and, and so that works. I think we just have to get, we maybe want to speak to, but we just have to work a little bit better to get clear about how we bring, and maybe it'll happen now because the Active Transportation Plan is coming and the Duke Road East Trail is coming. You know, those, those things will hopefully meet and will satisfy the community who are, who are concerned that we're a little bit out of sync on that. But I leave it to you to respond.
Yeah, and one thing that we said right off the bat, once we learned that we were moving ahead with an N A T process, is that we would be informed by that process as it continued. But it's not the same in terms of Parks and Trails. It has a different focus, so.
Mayor Little.
Yeah, just a comment on the subcommittees. We've always had subcommittees, whether we've called it that or not. A subcommittee is one to three members of an advisory committee get together to do the work. And it is fully transparent because setting up that subcommittee is done at the advisory committee in the public's view. The results are brought back to that advisory committee. And then they're brought to the committee, the Hall and at council. So there's many opportunities for transparency and comment at the advisory, the committee of the Hall and of council. So there is no secretness regarding this. We actually did this last term with the Agricultural Advisory Select Committee to set up the farmers', what was it called? Oh, yeah, Farm Forum. The whole committee could not move that planning for that forward. A subcommittee was struck. And that was brought back to the Agriculture Advisory Committee for comment, suggestion and for approval. So it is just a very practical way of doing it, and it's done in a very transparent and open way.
Thank you. Council Donaldson?
Yeah, we did that with Health Communities back when we were doing the Village Squares as well. So it's, it's sort of brainstorming. And so it starts out at an open meeting. They go off, they do their work, bring it back, and then it is discussed in an open meeting. So, you know, there's, there's no secrets or anything. It's just, they're getting the grunt work done, which is great when you can break out into, and the egg committee's looking at that right now for another project. We just, they just haven't got it off the ground yet. But those, those are very useful mechanisms when you have your citizen volunteer groups to be able to go with some expertise into, you know, a little group, come back, report. Something comes of it, or maybe something doesn't. And I'm sure Miasis has done something similar, too. But yeah, this is common.
Yeah, I think it's probably the way to address the concerns here is that the material coming from the working group or subcommittee puts it in the agenda material, and then everybody can see it, and then it comes to the meeting. And then it not be rushed when you actually go to discuss it. So everybody feels, and you put the public as well. I mean, I just wanted to be sure to address the concerns. And then I'm thinking that obviously the money question that's been raised, well, that's going to come up in the Active Transportation Plan itself. If not the Duke Road East discussion. I don't know if you want to add anything else, Counsel Shook? No. So great. I think we may have come to the end of our meeting. If you've ended your report. Yeah, so I take a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mayor Little, seconded by Counsel Rep. All in favor? Approved. Thank you.